Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 31st, 2022 to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment and announcement, and we will start this one tonight. Larry?
Thank you, Michael. I'll take my mask off. A few weeks ago, a couple of us had the great privilege of attending an event at the Montemoy High School honoring the class that put forward the Bridges for the Fallen, which was a tribute to those veterans who served and now have disabilities and recognition of them. And it was through a lot of effort, through regulatory processes, named one of our bridges for this group. And I'd like to read this proclamation in honor of them. Whereas two years ago, the Grade Eight Blue Team Doc, Blue Team D Doc civics class at Monmouth Regional High School chose veteran issues as their topic for Project Citizen. Project Citizen is a national program where a class takes an issue, researches it, develops a class policy, and tries to get the policy enacted. Whereas, the class met with Rob Mador of Bridges for the Fallen, a local organization that has worked to honor veterans all over the country. Whereas, the class chose to pursue the naming of Route 6, 137 Bridge in Harwich as a Hidden Wounds Memorial Bridge in honor of recognition of those who have suffered from post-traumatic stress disorder, traumatic brain injury, depression, anxiety, other unseen ailments, especially as a result of service in the military and public safety occupations. Now, therefore, do hereby urge all the residents of our community to join with us in proclaiming our appreciation for Mr. John Dixon's Grade Eight Team D Block civics class and Mr. Mador of the Bridges for the Fallen organization for their commitment to those suffering and who have suffered from hidden wounds and increasing awareness of these wounds through increased education and awareness and that the Route 137 Bridge will be a reminder to all of their sacrifice. Signed by each of us on the Board of Selectmen. And I would just say that I learned after the fact that this was no easy process. It took them, I think, a couple of years to work through the bureaucracy. You'd think that this would be easy to do. It turned out not to be. Secondly, I add that they had, Mary, you were there, maybe six speakers told just really disturbing in some sense, heartwarming stories in the other sense of all they've gone through with some of these disabilities and how people have helped them and the help they need in the future. So, we're really honored, and the class did this with some guidance, but on their own. Amazing group of kids.
Thank you, Larry.
I know, Mike, I got beyond the proclamation. Sorry.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Dixon, would you like to say any words?
Well, I'd first like A.J. and Susanna to come up. Rob, come up. And that's really as much as I want to say, except, but, no, it was a great experience. It's a great program that, you know, we've done for many years at the, well, as long as Montemoy's been there and Chatham High School had a long history with Project Citizen before that. And now, it's a required part of the state curriculum based on legislation that the state legislature passed, who, I forget, six or seven years ago or something, that you have a required civics project as part of eighth grade. And this is what that can become. They don't all turn into something as grand and successful and permanent and enduring as this, but sometimes they do. And sometimes that means kids are before you, asking you to, you know, ban plastic straws or something of the sort. And then sometimes, you know, it doesn't always play out as much as we hope it will. But this was a great success, and students like A.J. and Susanna are why it was a big success, and finding partners like Rob is really why it turned into what it did. So, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you. And thank you so much for the recognition.
Rob, would you like to say anything?
Everybody wants to hear me.
Step right up to the mic and just say who you are, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Rob Mador, Bridges for the Fallen. So, we're a really small organization that's based here in Harwich. This bridge here was our 1,799th bridge since 2012. And we're really proud, we're really proud of these guys, that they stepped up, they did a great job. Mr. Dixon, teacher of the century. Please promote him, because he's exactly what the kids need in every situation. We had great response from the town. Everybody really helped us, and we're really proud of what we did, and we're really proud to live in Harwich. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any of the students wish to say anything?
We should also thank Representatives Peak and Whalen, who really worked with us a lot over the two years where they both were as a team, helped us get this through, which is what it took. And it really was. It's, you guys are 10th graders now? So, this was a long eighth-grade project that lasted.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director, I am just reporting that on Saturday, February 5th, is our duck toss. And because most of our phone calls today were about how many ducks are still out there, there are two ducks that have not been turned in out of the 22. So, I can't say if they're all right. I've checked them several times in the snow. But we are inviting everyone. It should be a lot of fun, so come celebrate the Community Center's 22nd birthday. Yeah. 1:00 on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? We're going to go to a public hearing, and Mary, I would take a, could you read the public hearing notice?
Harwich Board of Selectmen's Notice of Public Hearing. Application for Entertainment License Monday, January 31st, 2022. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Sections 181 and 183A, on Monday, January 31st, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 p.m. in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of considering the new outside entertainment license applications submitted by Beachlight LLC, DBA Seal Pub and Cafe, 703 Main Street, Harwich. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend. Remote participation is also offered. Please see the posted agenda for dial-in information. Signed, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, published in the Cape Cod Times, January 21st, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone from the applicant here to speak? Anyone that's going to speak tonight after the applicant speaks, just put your hand up, I will call on you. Anyone online that wishes to speak, you will have to turn your camera on, and then you will have to identify yourself for the record. So, we're going to start with the applicant, and then I'll go to the crowd first, and then online after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it to the board. Nice to see you all again. For those of you who don't know me, Josh Swinstone, I'm one of the owners of the Seal Pub and Cafe, and wanted to just, if I may, just take a minute to just describe the application itself, and then just give a little bit of context. I promise I won't go on too terribly long. But I think it's important that we know, make a couple of things known. One is that we have, I've invited John Griffin here tonight, where John's behind me, who is our resident musician, to come and speak so that he can answer any questions that you may have, any questions anybody else in town may have about the type of music he plays and volume, et cetera. And thank you to Julie and to Mary for coming over and checking out the space. And I know that the rest of you have got some time on the agenda to come over and check it out as well. So, thanks for doing that, so you can see it with your own eyes. The application itself, just speaking specifically, is really meant to be from 6:00 to 10:00 on, in the summer months, June, July, and August, for an acoustic, unamplified singer-songwriter, guitar player, musician. John, we've selected because not only is he a talented musician, but he also knows the inner workings of the business itself. He has a full-time job up in Boston as the Director of Diversity for Boston Scientific. So, he does this as a passion, and he's a resident, his family is a longtime resident of Harwich as well. And also, we have Susanna Brown here with us tonight, who happens to be with John, our very first employee at the SEAL. So, she has been an outstanding representative for Montemoy, for her family, for herself, and does everything with a smile, does everything with the most enthusiasm and the most passion, and we're incredibly thankful for that. That really is sort of the essence of what we are trying to achieve with the SEAL. We purchased it, as many of you know, 30 days before the pandemic, you know, hit. I left corporate life in Washington, D.C. to come up to do this, to move home to my hometown. My family is longtime residents of this town, dates back centuries. Harwich old-timers are about the original OGs that there are in that. But I wanted to just frame that, because I think it's important that everybody understand that our intention with the business is with historic Harwich Center in mind, with a respectful crowd in mind, the intention with trying to go forward with having mellow acoustic music on our deck, is done with the intent to change some of the demographics that have attended our, the businesses that preceded us. And I think there's sometimes an expectation that whatever comes in is going to be exactly like what was there prior, and I want to make it clear that that is not the case, that we're actually trying to do something to really bring in a respectful, joyful, classy group of people, and people who will enhance both the town center, bring revenue to, much-needed revenue to the center of Harwich, I think, and hopefully encourage other, you know, business growth in the center of town. So, that's sort of the foundation of it. It's a pretty basic application that we're looking for, but I wanted to make it clear that we love our neighbors, we love our town, we love the different various charities that we support, and we're willing to work, obviously, with the board. Many of you know us already. We have had some issues with noise in the past, and one thing I'll address on that is that we had about a week in the opening of the, the release of the mask mandate in between Memorial Day and the first week of June last year, where people just went buck wild and came charging toward our front doors with very little time to react to that. So, I think we've taken a lot of the measures necessary to counteract that, and I hope that the board has, will recognize that, I think you have. But going forward, we're open to lots of compromise, lots of exchanges with the board, with our neighbors, with the rest of the folks in town. So, that's where I'll leave it for now. I wanted to introduce John, though, just so you can see him in the flesh. This is who would be strumming his guitar and playing Rich Girl by Hall &amp; Oates at Happy Hour, Cocktail Hour, we don't have Happy Hour, Cocktail Hour, out on the deck in the summer. John, you want to say a couple of words about yourself? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Hi, everyone. I'm John Griffin. Good to see you all again. I have been coming to Harwich for my summers and holidays for all 31 years of my life. My mother is part of the Doertie family. My grandfather was the town doctor here for multiple decades. My mom was the valedictorian of Harwich High in 1979, and I've worked in many different service industry jobs across Harwich throughout my time here on Cape Cod. And so, as Josh said, I've seen different changes in Harwich Center, and different establishments there. And when the start of the pandemic hit, I walked in to grab a beer when, after I finished up the end of the semester at grad school, and I met all the owners, and they're, if you know them, they're the kindest, nicest, most hard-working people, some of the most hard-working people that I've ever met. The SEAL never closes. I worked there on Christmas, on Thanksgiving. By the way, the point I'm trying to make is I care deeply about the town of Harwich. My family has a reputation here that I care about as well, and I wouldn't have been working and playing at the SEAL for the last two years if I didn't feel that it was an inclusive place. The SEAL is a classy place, but it's not, to me, it's not exclusive or elite like I've seen some other institutions here be throughout my years in Harwich. So, I do this as a passion. As Josh mentioned, I work in medical technology industry up in Boston. I come, I drive down and use my tip money to pay for my gas so I can get there, but I do it because I love it, and it brings family and friends and other members of the community together. I play Van Morrison and John Mayer and Norah Jones in very timid, tame music. I played guitar at church growing up. I'm, that's where I'm coming from. I don't have any interest in being loud. I hate breaking strings. I hate having a hoarse voice. And I think anyone who's been there on the deck knows that I don't play any type of music that would make a disturbance or bring in a ruckus crowd. And I just want to say thank you for hearing today. I'm a pleasure, that, a privilege to be able to speak today, and thanks to Josh and the other owners of the SEAL for all they've done, and I hope that their hard work and commitment to the Harwich Center and creating an inclusive culture. If you walk into SEAL, everyone there is happy, feels welcomed, and I want to contribute to that for as long as I'm coming to Harwich, which will be the rest of my life.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I'm happy to answer any questions. My Instagram profile is public. If you want to help build my follower base, I'm trying to get there, but you can also see, you can also see the type of music that I play there, and I think that will give you a better understanding of what happens on the deck.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I'll open it up to the public, and I would just throw out there now, if you're in support or opposition of this, and somebody before you says something, you can simply say, "I agree with them," and then add anything new, so that we're not spending the, a whole night saying the same thing. First speaker, the gentleman in the back, raise his hand first. And just state your name for the record, please.
I'm not sure if you can hear me easily enough with the mask, but I'm glad to continue.
You're welcome to pull it down if you want. If you don't want, we'll do our best.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the indulgence. My name is Peter Antonellis, and I live at 100 Parallel Street. I've been here 30 years. I haven't been here centuries. I want to start by saying I do appreciate all of the effort that the board has made to this point. The Chief of Police, the Town Manager, everyone's paid a lot of attention to this. I came to the June 10th meeting, I went to the, or attended, listened to the workshop for the regulations. I know how serious the matter is to you. And I, along with the folks who've been writing to you, regardless of what position we've taken, do appreciate the effort that you're putting into trying to resolve this. There is some disagreement. I'll start by saying I know that Josh has said that he wants to cooperate, wants to work with the town, but the thing that strikes me immediately when I hear that is that at the meeting that I attended previously on the 10th of January, I think there were several comments from the board, different members, saying, "Well, you know, we haven't really ever done outside entertainment at that location. It's somewhat a concern to us." And also, the board, some members were suggesting maybe a dinner hour is better doing something from 6 until 8, maybe 9. So, when I hear Josh saying that they want to cooperate with the board, but the license application says from 6 until 10, I'm wondering, did he not hear what the board was recommending, or does he just want to discount that? And that's of some concern to me. Also, at that meeting, at the close of the meeting on January 10th, I got up to talk, and I said to Josh, "It would be great if the applicants could reach out to the neighbors so we could resolve matters in a non-public forum, so that we could present something, present an agreement to the board the next time this was discussed." And that didn't happen. There was never any contact. I never heard from Josh. So, that's, that is somewhat disturbing. You all, I believe, have in your packet for tonight a letter that I wrote, and it's dated January 31st, and I think I made myself clear as to what position I was taking, and I'm opposed to it. And in that letter, I recommended maybe trying something a little or a lot different from what Josh has proposed. I sent an email to all of you, to all the members of the board, excuse me, this afternoon at about 3:00 o'clock, and so I don't know if you've seen that, but it is substantially different in many respects from the letter that I wrote around January 18th and has a January 31st date on it. I'd like to just make, I'd like to make my email part of the record today and at least distribute it to the board, and then, and then read it to you folks.
You don't have to give it to us. We did receive that. I'll make sure it's in correspondence next week.
Thank you.
But I didn't get it until today, after 3:00, as you mentioned, so I did not read it yet.
Okay. Well, if I may, I'd like to, I'd like to read that to, at this point. "I'm writing in advance of tonight's public hearing before the Board of Selectmen to reiterate in the strongest terms possible my wholehearted objection to granting the SEAL a license for outdoor entertainment at its 703 Main Street address. As you, as you all know, according to the Chief of Police and the Town Manager, the cost of investigation and administrative enforcement related to alcohol and entertainment license violations is unsustainable. These license violations range from noise complaints to underage drinking, overpouring, employee drinking after hours, public intoxication, public urination, trespass. Those allegations are a collective summary of what the, what the issues have been that have led to the Chief of Police saying, 'We can't do this anymore. It's just not working for us.'" And it, so I don't mean to suggest that that's the problem with, with the location at 703 Main Street, but certainly the noise has been an issue. "So, in response to what is unsustainable costs of enforcement, the town is more closely examining and limiting, A, applications for outside entertainment to sound amplification, B, the ways in which it might improve its administrative enforcement process, and C, its liquor license regulations, the latter to possibly include amendments and improved education of and compliance reviews for our licensees. Now, in trying to balance the interests of the licensees to expand and conduct business with or against the community interest in public order and residents' property interest in private and exclusive enjoyment of their homes, the board must grant these licenses unless public order is unreasonably disturbed." Quoting Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 183A, Section, or Paragraph 7, it mandates that the licensing authority shall grant the entertainment license unless the board finds that the license alone or in combination with other licensed activities on the premises, such as pouring alcohol, would somehow adversely affect the public safety or good order in that the activity, that is the entertainment, would not be conducted in a manner that would protect or preserve the patrons and members of the general public inside or outside of the premises from disruptive conduct. It cannot be conducted in a manner that somehow prevents an unreasonable increase in the noise, noise in the area caused by the licensed activity or caused by patrons entering or leaving the premises, or C, prevent an unreasonable increase in the level of pedestrian or vehicular traffic in the area of the premises, or an unreasonable increase in the number of vehicles to be parked in the area of the premises. So, in this regard, I believe it is extremely important and appropriate that the board first inquire and find, before granting the SEAL a license, the following. What exactly does the board consider and the SEAL consider to be its premises? What is the premises area? The deck? Contiguous areas in the parking lot? What are the allowed maximum occupancy? Indoors, outside, on the deck, and in contiguous areas like the parking area? What's the minimum parking space required related to this use under the zoning bylaw? What public space, if any, has been allocated by the town to the SEAL, if so permitted by law, for its exclusive use, for any shared use? Number four, how does the SEAL propose to supervise or control the behavior and conduct of its patrons, quote, "in the area of the premises," end of quote, including any patron who the SEAL has maybe wait-listed or denied or turned away? How will the areas near the premises or at offsite parking be lit for safety and supervision? Unless the board makes inquiries in the course of its discussion prior to granting a license to the SEAL, the burden and cost of examining such issues after a license is granted will fall to the police, to the town administrator, to its agents, and to citizens hoping to enforce compliance. As an alternative to enforcement, how about prevention? The Harwich Selectmen Liquor License Regulations prescribe a series of tasks that the licensee must undertake to maintain good order, such as, quote, "acting reasonably and diligently to disperse loiterers or patrons who attempt to congregate at the premises," end of quote. But these obligations, one, only apply after a license is granted, two, will not impact or control the conduct of patrons or loiterers gathering on any contiguous private area, and three, the regulations really only guide the town in prosecuting its administration enforcement efforts. Perhaps the board might condition any license it must grant by requiring the SEAL to first furnish the very relevant information and details regarding, quote, "actions to be taken to prevent disrupting public safety and public order," as quoted in Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 183.8. In this way, by conditioning a license, the SEAL can provide both the board and the interested parties with all of the necessary details regarding the scope and the boundaries of the premises that their patrons will use and/or occupy for service, or while waiting, and for parking, and lay out which personnel of the SEAL will be delegated specific enforcement duties. My neighbors have largely written to the board objecting to noise originating at the SEAL in past months and related disturbances of their private enjoyment in their own home at a time when there was no outdoor entertainment license for the SEAL at all. The Chief of Police hopes the liquor, excuse me, the Chief of Police hopes the liquor license regulations will address noise complaints, and we honestly hope so. The board might hope that restricting outdoor entertainment licenses to acoustic music only, non-amplified music, will solve the noise problem. Perhaps the board members, perhaps these members will also be proven correct. But the issue of outside entertainment for the SEAL at 703 Main Street location is about more than just outside entertainment. It is about disturbing the peace, generally speaking. As several board members have remarked at recent hearings, there's never been an outside entertainment permitted at that location. Maybe it is because the location is at the doorstep of the administrative offices for the First Congregational Church. I don't want to make history by supporting any effort to grant an outdoor entertainment license for that location. I hope the board will act accordingly. I do not want to be part of an experiment that creates an environment that is antithetical to the place that is Harwich, that is the Harwich Historic District. The First Congregational Church is an anchor institution in our designated Historic Village District, along with the Brooks Museum nearby. Yet, once a license is granted, if circumstances change as a result of the activity related to the outside entertainment license, we simply cannot put the genie back in the bottle. The church has already written to the board and explained in detail several visible ways in which it has endured the consequences of the SEAL's activities. Encroachment upon and violation of the private right-of-way that it shares with the SEAL, and abuse of the courtesy the church once granted to the SEAL for some parking in its parking lot, trash, and other detritus collecting thereby. Already, the church is burdened, and next it will be the town, the taxpayers, and nearby neighbors who will pay the cost of trying to enforce compliance, not the SEAL. Meanwhile, if successful, the SEAL will divert a few profits to pay the legal counsel it will employ to, if necessary, retain its newest income stream to defend against possible violations. Is this scenario in any way appealing to anybody? I don't think that it is. Several weeks ago, at January 10th, public hearing that was then discussing the SEAL's application for an outdoor entertainment license, an application that was subsequently withdrawn, I implored the SEAL to contact neighbors to discuss between the neighbors and the SEAL the contours of their proposal. In that meeting, the SEAL said it wanted to provide a mellow dinnertime ambiance. The board recommended the SEAL revise its dinnertime concept to a limited evening hours of 6 to 8 p.m. I never heard from the SEAL after the meeting. When the matter was next scheduled for a public hearing to convene on January 18th, I emailed Chairman McCaskill that morning and recommended the board work with the SEAL to pick one, two, or three Saturday dates scheduling for July and August to permit the SEAL for acoustic music-only outdoor entertainment between the dinner hours of 6 to 8. "If this proves successful," I wrote, "perhaps something new might be considered and possibly approved." Chairman McCaskill courteously and promptly called me to advise that the matter for the SEAL was rescheduled to a public hearing for January 31st. To say that I was disappointed when I To say that I was disappointed when I saw the agenda for tonight's public hearing is an understatement. The SEAL wants an outdoor license for recorded live music acoustic only, weekdays, Thursday through Saturday only, and for Sundays, all of which is from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. I do not believe the SEAL has yet earned the privilege of the Town granting it a license for outdoor entertainment. While some might justifiably recommend the SEAL for not making a mockery of the administrative enforcement efforts that resulted from its license violations, this cannot be the basis for the Selectman granting a license of the kind the SEAL has applied for. Nobody wants to repeat the events of 2021 in the coming months, but the best way forward is slowly and measured. By my calculation, the SEAL wants outside entertainment for 40 out of 70 summer nights, calculated between June 30th and September 4th. There's 70 nights. They want 40 nights. I say, let's give them a chance to succeed, but let's first have all of our questions asked and answered, and then have them work with the Board and the First Congregational Church to schedule a small number of summer nights to schedule acoustic music with dinner, ending at 8:00 p.m., with all the necessary supervision and control put in place by the SEAL at the parking areas. If deterrence is needed, a fixed schedule of well-advertised dinner events, which allows, could allow the Harwich Police Department to be on active duty, to notice, to watch for, drive by on bikes if necessary. But I do not want to imperil the Harwich Historic District, District Village by ignoring recent history and creating a carnival or some chaotic or disruptive atmosphere better suited for the port, if they so choose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back right, my right.
Thank you very much for an opportunity to speak. I'd like to speak on behalf of the SEAL.
Can you just state your name for the reference?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Ed Kennedy. We live at 11 Williams Way here in Harwich, have been here for over 24 years, and the last five years as a permanent resident. I have found the SEAL to be a wonderful addition to our neighborhood. This summer, we enjoyed, with several of our neighbors, a quiet evening on their deck. Also, we enjoy the fact that we do not have to go downtown and be with tourists, et cetera. Here, we have a neighborhood setting. I have met many of neighbors, many of our neighbors that live between the two or three blocks of the SEAL and our house. I think that it's, although I did frequent Red's Pizza, it was to get a pizza and leave and bring it home. Now, my wife, my neighbors, we find ourselves going there, not only during the summer, but in the winter. The food has greatly improved, the atmosphere has improved, and the crowd has changed. I understand some people may want to limit it to two hours. Personally, if you've been to the SEAL, you know that's a very small deck and really can only accommodate so many people, given that they're there 45 minutes to an hour. That really wouldn't give the community much of a chance to enjoy the evening with John. That's my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Right in front here on my left.
Hi, my name is Jane Thompson. I live at 6 Park Street here in Harwich. I too attend the SEAL pub, and I'm coming at this whole issue of noise from a somewhat different angle. So I'm going to read to you what I wrote today. "I have been at the SEAL pub when a guitarist was playing. The music was in no way a match, a noise match, for the noise always present at the intersection of Sisson Road, Route 39, and 124." It's horrific. "Here in historic Harwich Center, I have listened to the noise created by large container trucks heading to Shaws and the Star Market, they even come down Park Street, of oil trucks rushing to make deliveries, a manor of commercial vehicles, including those carrying construction equipment and supplies, privately owned vehicles with mufflers designated to create noise, vehicles equipped with oversized tower tires. The noise created is horrific. I hear it at my house with the windows closed. There is no attention paid to speed limits. Cars race through crosswalks. I had a librarian said to me, 'Oh, you don't want to cross this sidewalk here. It's dangerous.'" That's at Brooks Library. "Drag racing is a constant occurrence." There are, these are quality of life issues. There is no attention paid to speed limits. Cars race through the crosswalks, as I said. Drag racing is a constant occurrence. These are quality of life issues. These are issues of safety. These are environmental issues. I don't feel safe in Harwich. So yes, let's talk about noise, and yes, let's talk about policing, and yes, let's talk about year-round, at all hours of the day, flagrant violations of laws that should be obeyed.
Ma'am, we got to keep this about the entertainment license at hand.
But I am talking, yes.
I understand, but we're going to talk only about the issue at hand. We're not going to talk about drag racing. We're not going to talk about intersection noise. This is to, for an applicant to apply for an outdoor entertainment license. If your comments aren't related to that, then don't speak.
But what I'm saying to you is the, the issue is noise.
Thank you.
And as a citizen of the town and a taxpayer, I am concerned about the noise. I have said what I want to say.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm the Reverend Susan Thomas. I am the new minister of the First Congregational Church. I appreciate everybody's long history here. I don't share that history, but that building does, and that building does. We're celebrating our 200 and, thank you, 75th anniversary. I'm a Washashore. I am not even a Harwich hair legger. I, in favor, am trying to grow out the hair on my legs, so I can be one someday. But until then, bear with me. I unfortunately do want to speak in opposition of the proposal, although my partner and I frequent the SEAL, and we, even when we came here to interview with the Church in July, we talked with them about, let's have a pub theology group and have a meeting room there, but with COVID, it's not possible. So, our offices are on this side. The pastor's office is right next to the SEAL. The next office is our administrative assistant. The next office is our treasurer. So it's not even this far away from where the proposed entertainment would be outside. So number one, Mr. Kennedy, where did you park your car when you come to the SEAL? If the noise is so bad, the road noise is so bad, won't the entertainment noise have to go up to go above that? So consider that. The second thing is, often, I'm in my office, even at 6:00 at night, because, believe it or not, there are people who do work in Harwich. Not everyone is retired. So imagine me trying to plan your eulogy, your funeral service, your memorial service, your wedding vows, your wedding, counsel your family, counsel your child, counsel you, and there's this music and noise coming right through, people going all around. How am I supposed to do that? That's my job, and I want to, again, work with you on your job. So when I started in September, it was after the summer season. There are two designated parking spaces in our parking lot for the pastor, signs and everything, two signs. There is one for our administrative assistant. The pastor's spot, both of them were always taken during the day, every single day, by what I can assume were patrons and contractors of the SEAL. After, in October, being on a hospice visit with a dying family, a mother of a dying family, and out at Cape Cod Hospital and returning from somebody who was an elderly member there, my parking spaces were taken, and I finally went in and said, "I've had enough. When I do my work of helping the dying, helping the sick, helping those who are oppressed, helping those who are in need, I need to come over and be able to park." There's two parking spaces. I just need one parking space. Our administrative assistant cannot park either. I can only imagine that this will bring out more people into our parking lot. And since that time, I consistently, every day, bring a plastic bag with me to work to pick up beer cans, beer bottles, broken beer bottles in my spot. These are all in my spot, wine cooler bottles, nip bottles, plastic cups, plastic straws, limes, lemons, and women's panties. That's on a regular basis, every single day. Yeah, I guess that's what I have to say as far as noise. I'd be willing to work with people, but we also are a working office institution, and we provide a different kind of care and support and music to people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gentleman in the red and right behind you.
Very brief statement. Robert Buchanan, member of the First Congregational Church. Just a reminder to the Selectmen and the Town of Harwich that that parking lot, exclusive of three spaces, is owned by First Congregational Church. We've had relatively minor cooperation from the past and current owners of the businesses that have been in that building. Secondly, the, the parking lot behind the church is also owned by the church. For some reason, the church, the town, in some areas, may consider these parking areas as basically free and, and for the town. They're not. They're owned by the church.
Thank you.
I wasn't really prepared to speak, so I'm going to make this up. I'm Ann Beckett. I live at 40 Parallel Street. So I'm a little bit down the, downwind from the SEAL, but I just want to say, I've been in Harwich 20-something years now, so I'm a Washashore. But I have to say, this is the first business that's been in that location that actually cares about the location, cares about making downtown Harwich be a place that you want to go. I love going to the SEAL, and I, to be honest with you, I can hear the band music in the summer at my street. So if the, we've got a nice acoustic sound coming from the SEAL, I'm going to be thrilled to go stand in my backyard and listen to that. 10:00 at night, for God's sakes, I'm in bed by 8:00, but I can make it till 10:00. So, anyway, I just, I, I want to support this because I want to support what's happening in our town, and it's part of the reason I moved to Harwich, is because I like the politics and I like, I like what it offers, and I think this is only going to enhance it. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Not right now. You've spoken already. I'll get to you at the end, and we'll keep it related to what it's about. Susanna?
Hi, I'm Susanna Brown. I'm an employee at the SEAL. I've been working there for roughly two years, and it's been part of the best part of my life. I love working at the SEAL. I'll get there anywhere between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m. I'll do my daily routine. I'll go outside. I'll sweep up all the cigarette butts that are left over from the night, pick up any trash in the bushes, always make sure that the streets are nice and clean. By the time I leave, it's around 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, and John's there setting up with his guitar, and before I leave, we'll sing a couple songs together, and it's a great environment for anybody, kids, adults, retired folks. Anyone can go enjoy a nice cocktail or beer, enjoy John's great music, and I think we should continue to keep that going. I don't think it's going to be a distraction. I don't think it's loud at all. It's quiet. He doesn't use an amplifier, just a guy and his guitar singing, occasionally brings his puppy, who people love. When I get there in the morning, people come in for a coffee and say, "Hey, is John going to be out there with his guitar tonight?" And I love to say, "Yeah," with a smile. And they always come back and love to listen to music, and it's just a great environment. So I think that we should grant them this right to continue doing that. It makes people happy. It makes me happy. It makes me want to come to work every day. And yeah, I'm just so grateful for the SEAL and for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Lynn Carver. I'm from the First Congregational Church. And I just want to clarify something that Bob said. The parking behind the church, he mentioned that the church owns it, he means the parking right behind the church and also what we call the bike trail parking lot. The church also owns that. So neither that nor the parking behind the SEAL is municipal parking. The other thing is that we have a right-of-way, the driveway between the SEAL and the church property, and if we extend to outdoor entertainment, I feel like the right-of-way won't be clear. We've had a problem. I also, you may be aware, we have a thrift shop behind our church office building, and we rely on that parking lot for customers of the thrift shop. We're open on Fridays and Saturdays from 10:00 to 2:30. And we often, we have signs up. We bought signs to say that the parking lot during thrift shop hours is only for church or thrift shop customers, but that sign is pretty much ignored, so many customers of the SEAL park there, and sometimes that means our customers don't get to park there. Also, we have had a problem in the past with delivery trucks coming into the parking lot and taking up the whole parking lot for an hour, 45 minutes to an hour, sometimes during thrift shop hours, and that's our business. So we have talked to the SEAL about that. They have made an effort to have deliveries at other times, but not always, and so sometimes that is a problem in our parking lot, again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janelle Brown, Harwich Center. I came here tonight for the bridge thing, had no intention of participating in this discussion, but I feel that I need to. I hear a lot of discord not involving the entertainment license, and I think that we shouldn't even be talking about that right now. The entertainment license is what we're here to talk about. So I'm going to address the fact Mr. Antonellis brought up about historic district. The Irish pub is in a historic district. How many years was that open? Everybody partied there till 1:00 in the morning? I don't think that being in a historic district, a business in a historic district, should preclude being afforded the rights to have an entertainment license. What else did I have to say? Sorry, I didn't write it down. Parking, how is an acoustic guitar player going to change the, the atmosphere so much that there's going to be excessive parking? People aren't going to come there to see him jamming. They're going there for dinner. It's not a band. It's, it's, it's just a guy, you know, playing his guitar. It's just like having a radio on, really, and, you know, 150 feet noise buffer. I don't know. I just feel like the, the SEAL is being attacked for many reasons, and really, it's just an entertainment license we're talk, supposed to be talking about right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else new? This gentleman?
My name's James Mashoke. I'm head of administration for the First Congregational Churches, and I have, you know, all the respect in the world for anybody that's an entertainer because I've been an entertainer all my life, and, and it's, you know, it's just a great thing. I think there's nothing wrong with it. It's just, in this particular situation, it's going to be hard to control, to do crowd control. That's basically what I'm trying to say. I don't want to take anybody's food away off their table. Everybody deserves to make a living, the SEAL pub, the entertainer, but I have to look at the long aspect of this. Is this just going to be, you get an entertainment license, and it's only going to be just for acoustic music? That's all it's going to be for. There's not going to be karaoke, not going to be dancing in the streets, you know? So, you know, how, who controls it? I mean, a lot of, the Irish pub, yep, they had, they partied real hard, but they had, they had professional bouncers. they had professional bouncers. They had people that worked outside to help maintain the peace outside. You know, that's something that, you know, clubs have to do. I just feel that it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna have to be a little bit of give and take here. You know, I'm all for improving Harwich Center, that's like, you know, be the cat's meow, but, you know, there has to be a little bit more effort to, and cooperation, I would think. And that's pretty much what I wanted to say. And yes, the parking lots are actually, do belong to the church, all of them, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the crowd that hasn't spoken?
I don't know how you guys can sit there with these things on all day. My name is Pete Garrity. I live right here. One hundred and fourteen feet from the restaurant. Josh, you know that Adele and I wish you the best. You never came over and said to me, hey, we're gonna play music here, what do you think, right? Josh's restaurant is wonderful, great. But I'm there at one o'clock in the morning and one-thirty when Josh closes the doors. Josh is not interested in what's going on in the parking lot after hours. All right? So, I could tell you, when Red was there, we never had a problem. What goes on in that parking lot in the evening is duplicable, all right? I had a over-served young lady banging on my door the other day at one o'clock in the morning. Her boyfriend was in the parking lot ushering her back to the car. To add music on top of that, I'm putting up with that. You guys know the rules. A hundred and fifty feet away from where that music emanates from is the limit. I'm a hundred and fourteen feet away. Do the job, do what you're supposed to do. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the crowd that hasn't spoken? Ma'am, I see your hand and I will get to you, I promise.
Oh, I know.
With nobody else in the public, is there anyone online that wishes to speak? If so, turn your camera on. Elizabeth, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I didn't know you were gonna make me be on camera, so I apologize.
Just state your name.
But I, sorry, Elizabeth Harwood Center. And I just wanted to say that when we first moved to Harwich Center, there was a Mexican restaurant that played Mexican music, you know, until it closed at night. And I don't remember anyone complaining about that. I, I, the parking thing is frustrating for all, I understand, but we always want to support businesses, I think. And the SEAL is a new business that's really doing a nice job for Harwich Center. Before they opened, really, people would drive past Harwich Center on their way to someplace else. And now people say, oh, let's meet at the SEAL. I know people who have business meetings there. It's, it's a great place for the center. I don't think an acoustic entertainment license is going to affect the neighbors that much with the hours that have been set. You know, this is not a suburb where we need quiet by seven o'clock at night 'cause the kids have to sleep. It is still a resort town and I think the SEAL is doing wonderful things. I don't think acoustic music is asking too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online wish to speak? Ma'am, the floor is yours. Just state your name again when you get to the microphone for the record again.
My name is Jane Thompson. I live at Sixth Park Street. I want to say, the connection that I was making is that the noise that comes from somebody playing a guitar is no match for the noise that is created day in and day out by the way in which these roads are driven. There is nothing historic about Harwich. When you see these vehicles flying through this intersection, that's the point I'm trying to make. It's not, what I'm saying, I don't need to be entertained at a restaurant with music. I would actually prefer not to have it so I could talk to the person next to me and be heard. When I'm at the SEAL pub, I am constantly startled, not by a guitar, but by the vehicles speeding through that intersection at all, all of the time. The noise is horrific.
Thank you. You've made your point.
No, excuse me.
No, excuse me. You have made your point. This board does understand what you're talking about. And now I'm gonna get off subject really quickly. Our police chief is in the back.
And I will just end by saying, no, that's fine.
Thank you. But for the public and for anyone watching at home, the police chief is in the back of the room. This board had taken it up almost a year ago to deal with Harwich Center. And the red paint that people don't like, but some of us do like, and changing the direction of traffic, and the police cruisers that are parked in Harwich Center many, many, many times during the day. And I'm sure our police chief would be happy to give you the statistics on what's been pulled over. So this board has dealt with.
But why are you addressing me?
Ma'am, you have to, because you, I'm telling the public, it's not disagreeing, that the town of Harwich is not ignoring the traffic problem in Harwich. Anyone else wish to speak? You can speak if you want now, but we're gonna close the public hearing part of this and then you'll be able to address the board and answer any questions that you want to answer. So you want to wait, Josh? If nobody else wants to speak, back to the microphone, please.
Reverend Susan Thomas again, I'm sorry. I just want to speak to, I don't want to demean that you're doing your job as an employee, but I will come and give you my plastic bag of trash. You say that you sweep up the trash every morning or every evening, the cigarette butts and all that. I'd be gladly to share my trash.
Thank you, but let's not, let's not get into, she's entitled to her opinion as you are.
I know, and I'm, I'm just reiterating to you that I pick up trash. I also am reiterating to you that we are a business trying to work less than this close and do our jobs there as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jamie, did you say you had someone online?
I think Marietta would like to speak.
Okay.
Marietta.
Go ahead.
This is Marietta Nielsen at 95 Parallel Street. I am looking for a middle way. I am looking for a way to have the, find the peace between the Congregational Church and the SEAL. I would like to think that the SEAL would respect the noise that the neighbors are concerned about. And I would also like to think that the space issues for cars and pedestrians, the bicyclists, which, the bicycle people often include a lot of children, and the patrons for the pub and cafe. How do we find the middle ground? And it seems to me that a conditional license is the way and that the specific description of the number of seats outside on the deck should be specified and that the limits of the hours should be also specified and that the police would be well aware of what the license agreement, the conditional license agreement is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. I'll do it by roll call vote. Dawn?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Josh, if you want to join us at the table, you're welcome to. We're gonna go to questions now and comments from board members. The public hearing part of this is now closed. Josh, did you want to address anything that was said?
Sure, I would like to, if that's okay. I feel funny talking this way 'cause I kinda want to talk this way, if that's okay.
If you want to stand at the mic, it works.
Is that okay?
Yes, yep. Take your papers with you, you might need them.
I will, okay. Just in case. I wanted to thank those that came and supported. I also want to thank those that, that, you know, spoke in opposition tonight, too, because, you know, we're not, we are not unreasonable people. We are actually actively, you know, working to help improve the town. We understand that in any restaurant or pub, you're gonna have, it's a business, so you have people coming in and out. We try to control just about everything we can. Certainly, there's occasionally something we can't control. One of the things we can't control also is, a couple things that were mentioned earlier, and I'm just gonna briefly touch on them. Plastic nip bottles in the parking lot, things like that. This has not, and I'm getting off topic because this is not actually about the application for acoustic guitar for a few hours in the summer. But I would just like to address it since it's been thrown out there.
Josh, I'm gonna give you some latitude because these are things that the board is gonna consider in thinking about approving your application. So this is what the neighbors and the concerned people are concerned about.
So it's very relevant. Okay. So then I will say something about it. So, we don't sell nip bottles. We are actively against nip bottles. We would like to have them, you know, removed from town if possible. It does not serve our interest as a bar to have somebody coming in that, you know, throws nip bottles and trash in the parking lot. It's also our space, too, right? This is not our parking lot, but it is, the driveway access is ours. So it's a, it's a give and take and shared space with, with our neighbors at the church. I'm also a congregationalist. I am a Christian, believe very much in everything that's taught. It's at Bible school. And I'm a member of Pilgrim Congregational Church. Most of my family is buried in the cemetery next door. So, we are loving thy neighbor as much as possible. I had a lovely conversation, contrary to popular, a lovely conversation with Adele the other day about acoustic, John's acoustic guitar music. And she's one, she's one of my favorite people, I absolutely adore her. So, so I just wanted to, you know, make it known that we do love our neighbors, we want to reach out to them as much as possible. We are also, somebody had mentioned it earlier, Ned may have mentioned it earlier, we're there constantly. We are never, I mean, there's, one of us is always present. So, Reverend, I'm not sure who you spoke with perhaps about parking, but, you know, had it been me, and I know you and I hadn't, hadn't spoken about it 'cause I would remember it, but had it been me, you know, we wouldn't be having a conversation now about somebody parking in their spot because I wouldn't allow that. We have a sign inside that says, please respect our neighbors and the pastor's parking spot. So, just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And certainly love to chat with you further about it, if possible afterwards, so. Other than that, I wanted to submit, we have two-hundred-and-nineteen signatures in support of John's playing guitar on our deck, which is a very small space. And I would just reiterate, for those of you who haven't maybe seen it or haven't been there in a while, it is a small space. And what we're doing, again, just to reiterate a point I made earlier, we are seeking to actually enhance the destination, enhance the professionalism and the, the culture demographic of the customer base we're attracting. That does not mean adding to, you know, stacking on top of and making it more crowded or more difficult to maneuver in a parking lot or to add crowd size to it. What it means is actually quite the opposite. It's actually a calming influence. It's supposed to be done in a way such that the entertainer allows people to sit, enjoy the music, hopefully uninterrupted by, you know, huge trucks going behind, things like that. But to sit and enjoy their evening and hopefully, from a business perspective, extend their stay a bit, right? So we want them to lengthen their, have another glass of wine, have another salad, whatever else, you know, enjoy their food, have dessert. That's what we're actually looking to achieve through that. And I'm hoping that that will continue to enhance Harwich Center and bring a little bit of spark of life and vitality, but also some civility and some peaceful patronage to town center that I think could use it and could use a little bit of polish. So, that's where we're at with it. If I could submit these for the record, I would love to do so. If any answer any questions.
Town administrator, you can handle that.
I will do that.
Thank you, Josh. I'm gonna open it up to comments from the board, Josh, you can get back up if we have any questions. I would say the gentleman that said, do your job, you're a hundred percent right. You're a hundred percent right. We are doing our jobs now. And I believe that in, in Harwich Port, the broad issuance of licenses has backfired and this board has met more on that topic and with the police chief, with our legal team, and we are trying to calm that situation. So I, it's not our intent to create another Harwich Port in Harwich Center. And I say that lightly because not all of Harwich Port is bad and not all of the people in Harwich Port have abused the licenses. And we are reeling them back in. But most importantly, the board has really digested, and to one speaker's point about traffic in Harwich Center, the board has given orders on, on Parallel Street, and I'm just saying this broadly, not necessarily to you, sir. Just really saying that we are doing our job. We are, we are focused on traffic, we are focused on speeding, we're focused on the liquor license regulations, we're focused on noise. And we have taken this up a lot. So a lot of thought is being put into these decisions, which is why we're having a public hearing tonight. Josh, we did, I think to the first speaker, we did have the conversation about ten o'clock. And I would tell you, right up front out of the gate, ten o'clock is a non-starter for me. We'll see where the rest of the board falls. But, but to ask them to put up with it from not at all until ten o'clock at night, for what your purpose is, to me, seems like a stretch.
Sure. Could I respond to?
Go ahead.
So, the, the, I agree, agree with you and happy to accommodate any amendment to that, to nine o'clock or whatever it may be. The point was brought up to us when we were discussing it further, that, you know, when you go to June, unlike where we're sitting at right now, or even earlier in November, December, in June, it's actually still light out, you know, until ten, basically ten o'clock, nine forty or so, it gets dusky out. And so, you tend to have an environment then where it's still light outside, where people are just, you know, enjoying the evening. It feels evening-like. And, and perhaps, this is just something to consider, perhaps that's something where, could it be ten o'clock in June and then it goes, scales to nine after July fourth from, you know, to six to nine or something like that? It was only a suggestion, a thought that we had, you know, had brought up, but happy to amend it to nine o'clock or work with everybody to change that.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes.
And I would just ask the musician, are sets typically four hours or is your set gonna be spread out over four hours? And you have to stand up to the microphone and answer that question.
Yeah, so usually three hours total and I take two breaks, two ten, fifteen minute breaks, if that makes sense, so.
So the ask is a little bit further than what the reality is?
Correct. I mean, it is nice to have some flexibility, depending upon like my workday, I could maybe some days start at five or six, but yeah.
Thank you.
I can't go for more than three hours, so.
I didn't think so. Thank you very much. Again, back to the first speaker, we, we, we did the math, almost the same, but I count Labor Day, Memorial Day to Labor Day, fifteen weeks. Four days a week if you got your whole ask, sixty days. And that's barring weather, right?
Barring weather and John's availability, 'cause I, I mean, I, I highly doubt four days a week is not gonna, right?
He's not playing for you four days a week regardless.
Correct. Exactly.
And his head is shaking for, for the record, back and forth, no, he's not gonna play four days a week. So those are my concerns. Four days a week, four hours was a tall ask and I'm a no at anything past nine o'clock, just myself, and we'll, we'll see where the rest of the board is.
Three and three.
There's been some, some great comments from the church and those comments about trash. And I know you don't sell nips, but it is common practice for people going into bars to take a shot before they go in so they don't have to give you as much money.
Right. But it works, we're against it as well.
Right. I would say that there wouldn't be, as far as the beer cans, maybe they're kicking them out of their car on the way back to their truck afterwards. I'm not sure how much of the liquor regulation conversation you've paid attention to, but I will tell you that this board is taking it very seriously. And it would be a violation if we see it. And, and you have to police your parking lot. Regardless of what transpires tonight, you have to make sure that people aren't parking in somebody's parking spots. You have to make sure people aren't congregating in the parking lot. They're your responsibility. And, and I think that this board, and through the town administrator, and the enforcement division that we're talking about, there's gonna be a lot put on you. The question about the amount of seats and the occupancy. Occupancy, I don't think we can get to tonight, but on the seats, you have 21 seats.
21 seats.
Period.
That's it. We move in, move them out. That's the way we work.
And the premises you have, we have a map of what your premises is, because you needed that for your liquor license, correct, Joe?
Correct.
Right. So I would say that you, you know what the concerns are. We're not gonna allow, and can't allow, you to overflow into your parking lot.
No.
Have people stand by the rail. So if the enforcement division goes by, anyone on it, please go by, and you have a bunch of people standing on the sidewalk, looking in at, at the musician, or the parking lot. That's outside of your premises.
Right. Yeah, that's not the intent, and, at all.
So, and my emphasis really is, this falls on you. It doesn't, so if the board approves this license, all of what we're talking about falls on you, the restaurant. I'll reserve the rest of my comments for later, and I will start with Don.
Well, most of these are comments, they're not specific related to this. I mean, just for context, in ancient times, when I served in the Board in the early 2000s, I believe I was the only one who voted against the liquor license for the location when it was Ayacarumba. And it was based on it being too close in proximity to a church. But that ship has sailed, because that license was issued. So now we have to worry about enforcement. I'll say that the license, the application and any approval that would derive from that is time-specific. I mean, as Michael pointed out, I wouldn't go past 9, Mike, to, as an agreement either. Further, I mean, which kind of gets me to the point where there can't be a conflict with the thrift shop, because we're not talking about that timeframe. It, and this isn't a flexible, we give him this, and he can perform at 3:00 in the afternoon. It's specific to the times, granted. It's conditioned as to what type of entertainment. I'm pretty much known as being hostile, out, or amplified entertainment for the last bunch of years. I've been advocating for acoustic music. It doesn't matter whether John's playing guitar or not, because it's generically limited to acoustic music. So if somebody were to come in, in two or three years from now, and we renew the license, that's the type of music you could have. It doesn't matter who the musician is, that it's limited to that, and that only. I was gonna say the same thing about nips, couldn't possibly have come from your location. Now, the parking is a whole different issue, and I'm with what Michael said. Gotta be more aggressive than that. And frankly, if I were the church, I'd be towing cars. Because whatever ill will you might think that's gonna create, it's got, you gotta send a message somehow that you own the parking lot. You've always owned the parking lot. It's always been an adjunct to the church's office area and the thrift shop, which came So again, I believe it would be reasonable to do 6 to 9, and only for acoustic purposes, and then only for the days that are specified. Because I can assure you, and you know this, because you were part of that giant hearing. We are absolutely cracking down on things, and we're not gonna tolerate people trying to stretch the issue, or, you know, get a, tow in the door, so that they can do a lot more. Yeah, I mean, I personally would like to see everybody's outdoor license conditioned to be acoustic, because it really, I mean, I play guitar. I was in a band. I mean, I played clarinet, I play a bunch of things. Acoustic is limited by the ability of the instrument to project. And I, I don't, I don't care how big a voice John's got, he's, he's not gonna be able to carry his voice over the din of the traffic. I tend to agree with that.
Yeah, you're definitely right about that. I, you know, certainly we've studied this ourselves, and done a lot of self-checks on sound carrying, and how that feel, looks, you know, how that carries across the street. And you're absolutely right. It's, it's, it is very hard, even on a very busy night, even with no, you know, music or playing at all, if just customers are sitting on the deck, talking at a rate like we'd be talking to each other now. You can, you can hear it if you're standing on the sidewalk in front, but the second you round the building behind, it disappears, just because of the blockage of the way that the, that barrier, you know, exists there. So you, yes, exactly right.
And finally, I just wanna say something to the church family, and to other people who were commenting about this. This isn't a standalone anything. It actually is an adjunct to a liquor license, and therefore, you know, violations of that wind up impacting their liquor license, if, if they wind up having a problem. Which is something that I would guarantee is a mighty powerful inducement to try to make sure that it works right. Because it isn't just that you're naughty, we're gonna take away your entertainment license.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mary?
This is one of those that I find very hard, 'cause you're dealing with some competing interests, and I, I respect both sides. I think that's a fabulous business, Josh. You guys have done an incredible job bringing that little corner alive, and I think it's wonderful. It's beautiful inside. I'm a big fan of guitar music, so that's all wonderful. But, you got neighbors, and there's a lot of neighbors that aren't happy about this, and then you, then you throw into the mix last summer's horrible events. And I know, some of them, we can argue whether they really were as severe, but I happen to believe there was enough there, that there was, there was things going on that should not have been going on. So I'm torn that, much as I love you and your family, I'm torn in that, do we give the seal more when they created problems for us last year? Or do we try to have a summer that's calm and orderly, and then next summer add the music in? So, that's where my head is swirling.
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
So I have a couple things, before I can even really delve into how I feel about it, but factually, a couple clarifications. So I understand the church owns the parking. Is that part of your lease?
It's the church, excuse me, the church does own the parking as part of it. We have an agreement with the church, the driveway, access driveway is owned by our landlord, our, our, our building.
The right-of-way?
The right-of-way.
Yeah.
And the church owns the parking lot. So it has been, it's stood for many years as a mutual agreement. Now, it's potentially possible that we're busier now than, than previous establishments that have been there are, have been. And in any instance of anything that I have ever seen, somebody parking awkwardly and can't allow somebody through, and we've had a few of them that have done that. You know, we're immediately out there, getting them to move, and get the car out of there, and park it somewhere else. We're aware of the thrift shop hours, and very careful to make sure that there's maximum space allowed for them to park, so that people can access the thrift shop on Saturdays. It's a fantastic thing. I shop there myself, and, you know, it's something that I think everybody should be able to take advantage of. So, so we're very clear with our patrons about making sure that there's no blocking going on there. Like I said, you know, there, yes, there's gonna be somebody who comes in and perhaps parks there, and blocks something, and we don't see it, and, you know, that will happen. But, I mean, we're, we actively, you know, encourage people to park on the street, use the parking spots that are already there, fill that up first. It's better for our business, makes things look busier when you come by. So we're always advocating for that, before anybody parks in the side or in the parking lot.
Has there been any discussion about doing anything, you know, to stop any kind of parking from happening there, like planters, or?
Yeah, so a couple things. One is, we talked about perhaps doing a, this is something that Bob emailed to the church. Unclear as to what the resulting discussion is, or where the status is at, right now. But something we'll certainly follow up on, about doing some planters, just like you had said, some, some more vegetation back there, certainly in favor of it. You know, from a, from an aesthetic point of view, that's something that I'm certainly in favor of. I want it to look nice when you come back there. It's not our parking lot, so the permission would have to come from them in order to do that. But we would be thrilled and happy to contribute to that, to the beautification of the parking lot, for sure.
Okay, so in terms of, so that's a parking question, in terms of the right-of-way, and then the parking in the rear, so it's the church's parking. And then I would go back to the points raised earlier, that, you know, as the chair has raised as well, that whatever's going on in that parking lot in the evening is on you, right?
Sure.
So if they're hearing noises in the back, and things are going on, none of that should be going on, 'cause somebody should be monitoring that parking.
None of it should be going on, at all. And one of the things I would say to that point, it's a good point for bringing that up, Julie, appreciate that. One of the things we active, again, we actively do, is we encourage front, frontage use of the space in front of the building. Street, not coming in the parking lot. Like I said, I can't control everybody, somebody's gonna park where they're gonna want, where they wanna park, and they go back there. Some, a girlfriend and their boyfriend, they're having a disagreement.
Excuse me. You're gonna have to take the conversation into the, into the outside, the cameras in the room, pick up any conversation that you're having. Please give the respect to him that he gave to you.
Certainly, you know, someone has an argument, and, you know, occasionally that happens, and boyfriends and girlfriends getting arguments together. That's the, by, by issuing the license that we're talking about today, that is actually the kind of behavior we're trying to eliminate. That's actually what we're seeking to get rid of. So, it may sound counterintuitive to do this, but it is actually, the aim of this is to bring in a more established, well-heeled audience, somebody, people who are respectful of our town, respectful of our business. We certainly recognize the, you know, punishments that go along with, and the responsibilities that go along with having a liquor license. I love all of you to death, but I really would love to not be here for like 12 months in front of you. Amazing. So, so that would be incredible. And so, part of the application for this is in with, I know it sounds like we're adding to, and, and it is technically an addition, but what the intent is behind that is not to have, you know, a heavy metal band out there, it's to have somebody whose influence and follow, followers are, you know, mellow. And earlier in the evening, 9, 9 o'clock is a very reasonable time, and I think we did that just for his schedule, so that if he arrived late, he could play from 7 to 10 or something. But we'll make it work with whatever you guys decide, so.
Okay, so, and, and I appreciate, you know, what, what you're trying to achieve, and we are talking about an entertainment license. I just wanted some clarification on the parking lot and the right-of-way. The, the other question I have, which is, you have 21 seats total, the seats outside on the patio, those tables don't move, so it's not like you're gonna be squishing people in there, and, right?
Correct.
They are where they are, and they're fixed.
Yeah, they don't move, they're, you've seen them, they're, they're-
So they don't go anywhere, and whoever's at those tables is your max.
That's it.
Right.
That's it.
And, you know, I guess-
We could add, so like if somebody was inside and wanted to listen to music outside, we could move a chair from indoors and add, if, if the person sitting at the table doesn't mind, some random person sitting next to them to listen to the music, that's fine. But that would be the maximum, yeah.
That would be it. You take from there to bring outside.
Correct, yes, and then likewise, the reverse direction.
Okay, thank you. And I guess going off of that, if you're going to be having the music, and the gentleman, John Griffin, which I have to say is my maiden name, so I have a lot of John Griffins in my family.
We, we have two John Griffin employees, too, so it's a, very confusing.
Yeah, right. So having said all that, I, I, I think that we also have other outdoor music. We're talking about an entertainment license. I too would be interested in restricting the time somewhere to 6 to 9, or something like that. I wouldn't wanna impact the church if they had any services in the evening, or, and I certainly wouldn't wanna impact them on a Sunday. I'm really not in favor of Sunday.
I'm fine with that, and thank you for mentioning. Also, you know, speaking on that note, too, you know, as I mentioned, I'm also a congregationalist. I wanna make sure that we don't interfere with anything they have going on, celebrations, et cetera. We could have an open dialogue, just the two of us, would probably be the best thing. And then that way, we can head off any, you know, if there's something specific happening on the grounds of the church, you know, we'll make sure that we clear our calendar, so there's nothing interfering with that.
So that, thank you, 'cause that's my last, my, that's a great segue, because my, my only other issue here is that there hasn't been a conversation. And to me, in order for you to continue to thrive, and I think the business is thriving, but you're surrounded by neighbors and other, and church, and various people, that I think the communication's key. And it is gonna be on you to make sure all of these things are falling into line, so I would say that open dialogue should start sooner rather than later.
100% agree with you on that.
That's it. Larry?
My comments are brief. I, I agree with what's been said by Julie, Michael, Mary, and Don. You know, the, between the liquor license and the entertainment license, I think the details are very much spelled out. If you adhere to those, you should be okay. I think all of our experience is, is that 100% of the time when we have difficulties, it's because it's bad management. They aren't making sure that activities take place, the parking lot is cleared, all that, so I think we all want a commitment from you that you as management and the rest of it, we'll step up and be sure all these rules are adhered to. I'm comfortable with the 6 to 9, and like to give it a chance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just verifying something. Josh, the application that you submitted, let's not get off on the wrong foot here. It does not specify it's seasonal.
Does not specify it's seasonal, it should specify it's seasonal, so it's not-
Well, I'm telling you, it does not. So, that would be a non-starter for me. It would have to be, between those hours, it would have to be not Sunday, and we'd have to actually fold in a season by definition of probably Memorial Day to-
I think that's, that's always been my intent, so if it doesn't, if it's not noted on there-
That can be included in the motion.
Well, I'm mentioning that because it should be included in the motion, if, if we do wind up considering that.
Sure.
And the other thing is, if we get as far as dealing with the, you know, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, weekday license, it's up to you what you wanna do, but I mean, I, I suspect that it's not gonna be as receptive on a Sunday license, and you may wish to withdraw that request, as opposed to having us vote a denial on that.
Sure, we can do that, that's no problem.
Before we get to the motion, we'll get into any withdrawals in addition. Anything further from the board?
No.
Joe Powers, anything to add to the conversation, or anything you would like to add to the conversation?
Technically, no, in the sense that the board is the licensing authority, and I think you've done your job very well. You've heard from the public, but I, I think there are a few things that I should put on the record first. The application that you have in the packet does indicate that it was weekday entertainment annual, so it was not noticed for a seasonal. Having said that, going from an annual to a seasonal could be considered to be, you know, less of the scope, if you will, but it may be something that if you were going to approve the license, you would do, subject to council approving, that it was duly properly noted.
Thank you.
The other thing I would emphasize, as I've heard the discussion, the application demonstrates that they're looking for recorded or live music, but it has been added specifically that it's acoustic only, no amplification on deck. And with all due respect to our guitarist, who has been a key part of the discussion tonight, and hopefully is trending very well on Twitter and Instagram, the application does not speak solely to guitar music. So if the board is contemplating that, given how all the discussion went, you may wanna condition the license to indicate that the acoustic only is acoustic only by guitar. 'Cause to the earlier point, if you approve this license, you're approving outdoor, recorded or live music, acoustic only, but you are not limiting it, limiting it to guitar, even though that's the intent. 'Cause as prior speakers have said, there's intent, there's intentions, and there's what's been applied for.
Thank you, Joe. And I'm gonna rely, if there's a positive motion to be made on Don, to make that motion.
No pressure there.
Police Chief, hate to put you on the spot, but I'm done. And thank you for attending tonight. Chief, I, I did read your memo, and it is part of the packet, and, and being reluctant, and I understand why you're reluctant. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak, based on what the board has said, and what you've heard from the public. Anything to add?
Yeah. I'll-
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I think I agree with Selectman Anderson. On the, on the, there's definitely two sides. We always seem to be stuck in the middle as a police department. But I just, will give you one brief phrase that I use continually when we're recruiting police officers and doing background checks. And that is, in my opinion, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. So I'm still hesitant, and I would prefer to see a track record established with no violations before we do anything else. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, chief. Anything you want to say in closing before we go to a motion or non-motion?
Only one question, which was for, for Joe, which is that I think on the application for the acoustic only, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I think, was it an auto checkbox there that basically grants recorded, live, recorded or live music? Because we're really, we're really just, that, excuse me, specifically applying for acoustic only outdoor music and nothing beyond that.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Does that, does that box include that language, Joe? Is that why it was checked?
No, the box, the, the pre-printed language says required. Entertainment type in parentheses, check all appropriate boxes. The box that was checked is hardcoded, if you will, recorded or live music. Added in by presumably the applicant of the words acoustic only, no amplification on deck.
Thank you, Joe.
Right, so that's, that's what we intended, because that was the, the choice wasn't available, so we wrote it in as that.
Thank you. Any follow-up from the board, any members? Don?
Yeah, before you put me on the other spot, I, I tend to agree with Joe that it's, it's a smaller scope as opposed to a larger scope. But it wasn't noticed for that, number one. Number two, it does say that you're requesting annual on the form. I'd like to be able to resolve this by coming back. Because unless John's going to be wearing his, his fur-lined pants, he's not going to be entertaining anybody in the next few weeks anyway. So there's no urgency for us to act tonight or else you're going to lose 30-year season or something. Because my inclination would have been Memorial Day to Labor Day, that's it. But you got to, I would feel better if he just resubmitted an application that says that, doesn't submit the one for Sunday, and then we can have this discussion exactly as to the parameters that you've applied for, as opposed to me trying to back into him with a motion. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure, it's up to you guys. I have no, I, I don't really have an opinion either, one way or the other. I'm happy to adjust it if we can be amended now, so that it's, and we're clear about the hours and days. I'm fine with that.
There's a lot of amendments that you got to make.
Yeah, it wasn't to that, I just wanted to make sure I was being clear though. On the application, when the word acoustic is placed there, that is not automatically guitar. Acoustic simply means no amplified music. So the application request is redundant in that regard. But again, if you accepted just acoustic, you're not limiting it to any sort of instrument. And so if there's a specific instrument that's being conceived of, again, it's better for the town and for the parties involved to have a more complete and accurate application.
Thank you. Don?
Going back to my musician credentials, I'm not sure whether I care. I mean, whether it's that or a violin, or.
Clarinet.
Or a clarinet, or saxophone. Well, a trumpet actually might make a difference. But I mean, the point is a trumpet would be, would be awfully sparse just by itself.
You need a sliding trombone and something else.
I, I think we're trying to get to the point where we're getting too minute about this. Unless we want to, unless as the board, we want to restrict it to just a guitar. I don't see the difference between that and a violinist playing, to be honest with you.
I would love to have a violinist, but.
With sound pressure levels, I mean.
Mary then Larry.
The, the notice didn't say that it was year-round or seasonal. So I don't think we have to worry about the notice. The notice just talks about entertainment.
And I would argue that personally, that we're, if we're walking it way backwards and we went through the advertising process and, and, and the worst case scenario was annual, and we, and we've stepped it back to seasonal, we're going in the other direction. And, and I personally think it would be a colossal waste of everybody's time to do this again. And I think a motion, as long as Joe's okay with it, a motion saying that as long as council is okay with it, and I would put council right in there. So you, you'll get, or maybe at best when you walk out, but everybody will have an understanding as to what maybe is. And if council is okay with it, we issue the permit. If they're not, we re-notice and we do this again. I would be very comfortable with that personally, based on how that notice read and because we're walking it so far back.
Sure. Full endorsement from us on seasonal.
Well, I think you've made my point. We've done this, this is our second hearing on this, we'll go to a third hearing. And the changes are going from basically 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock. Saturday's another motion, or Sunday's another motion, so we can, if we decide not to do Sunday, we just, we don't have to do that. I, I prefer moving ahead if we condition this, as Joel has said, with legal counsel.
Julie, go ahead.
So all along, as after we've been talking, I, I have, I have a draft motion. And just let me read it and see if this meets the parameters. New outdoor weekday entertainment license from six to nine on Thursday, Friday, Saturday only for acoustic guitar music only on a seasonal basis from June 1st to Labor Day. And if you want to add on a conditional.
Pending council. Pending council's review. Is that, Joe, is that okay?
I believe so. Was that to or through Labor Day?
Well, I guess it should be through Labor Day.
I just, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I said to, but you're right, it should be through Labor Day.
Don?
Yeah, like, mention a couple of things. I don't mind one way or the other about whether it's an acoustic guitar or not, but you really need to have accompanied by unamplified singing. Because you don't want to have an amplifier for his voice, anybody's voice. The second thing is, if we're going to do it, there's this massive dip of participation on Cape Cod between the Memorial Day weekend and then, say, the third week when schools close and people start showing back up again. It, it would seem to me to be more reasonable if we're going to do it, to do it from effective Memorial Day weekend through the Labor Day weekend.
And, and that's where I want. And, and again, limit, it's going to be limited based on weather.
Right, that's a good point, because it doesn't always fall on the first, it can fall sometimes a week and a half.
And we all know what you meant, Julie, but 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM in the motion.
So I would entertain a motion.
Try it again.
We'll start from scratch.
So a new outdoor weekend, weekday entertainment license from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday only for acoustic only guitar music with non-amplified singing on a seasonal basis from Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Memorial Day weekend.
Pending.
Well, Memorial Day is the Monday.
Pending.
Oh, pending legal counsel, review by legal counsel.
And then the issuance of this permit, will you read to who and the address as part of the motion?
The issuance of the permit is to Beachlight LLC, Doing Businesses, Seal Pub and Cafe, 703 Main Street.
And I think instead of permit, you meant license.
I mean, license.
Right, second.
Oh my God.
Moved in second. Does everybody on the board understand that motion?
Yep, perfect.
Town administrator?
And that, to clarify, that is the Saturday of the Memorial Day weekend, right?
Any, any discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
No.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Four, one is the vote?
Thank you guys. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You will hear back from us on the license and whether or not legal approves it. And I can't emphasize enough, you heard the complaints. And, and we had an, we had quite a summer last summer, and it wasn't just you, but please take their comments seriously.
You hopefully will not see us again in this capacity.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you go forth, just understand that it's a privilege. It is not something that is owed to you, and it wouldn't take a whole heck of a lot for many members of this board to flip into Mary's position.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the trust and that we'll do the right thing moving forward on all of those counts. So appreciate it, thank you.
We still have a lengthy agenda, so we're going to dive right into it. Give the room a second, Joe. I think while they did the room a second, I forgot under public comment and announcement that I wanted to thank the men and women of the DPW, along with the private contractors and along with Eversource for what an amazing job they did during this blizzard. Did I get a motion on the consent agenda?
A move that we vote to approve the consent agenda with two items. One is to remove Barry Worth from the Energy and Climate Action Committee. And second is to vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes February 16th, 2021 and October 4th, 2021.
Second.
Moved in second. Is any discussion? Roll call vote?
Just, just one item. I don't know if this matters or not. There's one statement in there that I asked about any current litigation. I did not, but I think you did. I'm okay with it saying I said that.
Can we just fix that?
Or does that need to be corrected?
It should be corrected, but you can vote, you can vote acceptance pending the correction.
Okay, just correct that, one line.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Isn't that a part of the second?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Joe, I'm going to let you introduce the next topic, just as to why we're, or the process that we're following now, because it's different from last year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the members, even though we've been here all night. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you have in your packet? First, for our fire chief is a draft performance evaluation for the last, for the past year, I should say. The chairman's statement as to this being different, the chair, as you may recall, sought legal counsel's opinion. The town enjoys contracts with your fire chief, your police chief, your finance director, and of course with me as town administrator. What we all have in common is we are all employed directly by the Board of Selectmen, so under Mass General Laws, Chapter 150E, you folks are the employer. There is language in each of the contracts that allows, in some instances, for you to direct me as administrator to begin the process, but in every instance, the board is required to do the final process. And that's why you'll see on the agenda this evening a reference to the fire chief's performance evaluation as draft, and that matches the language that's in his contract. And then for the police chief, it says initial performance evaluation, and that comports not only with contract language, but with also labor council's directive that the employer finish the process. So what you have this evening are two draft or initial evaluations that I've done of my peers, my fellow executive managers in government. And easy for me to say, I think, I think they've both done very well in the process. And as the, the board had told me, and I took it exactly how I believe it was meant, as this evaluation goes, satisfactory means you're doing exactly what we want you to do, and you're doing exactly what we hired you to do. And so you'll see that they have grades of satisfactory and in some instances highly satisfactory. So that's the, the update generally, Mr. Chairman. If you, if you'd like, I can walk through it. Or I could also just defer, because I know the feeling that these gentlemen are going through, sitting here all night waiting to be evaluated on television.
Thank you, you do not need to go through it, we, we've read it. For the board, I think we make our comments tonight that you want to make to two of the direct hires that are here. And then I would ask you to send your comments to the town administrator, and then he will forward us a final performance evaluation for us to vote. And that will be a final written. Doing it this way makes a lot more sense to me. I think in the beginning, when it was announced, it was new to everybody, but I don't see how in the past the town administrator was the only one that did the evaluation and you are our direct hires. So for me, and, and as I've made comments about the town administrator, we don't interact with you guys on a day-to-day basis, which is why I think Joe's comments are very important to the board. Certainly, we can see the direction of our public safety and how great you guys are doing. But I think the comments from Joe are super important to get a baseline, our comments and then our feedback, and then to vote a final, final appraisal. So if you're okay with that, I think I'm going to defer to the board for comments and then ask each board member sooner rather than later to send your comments back to town administrators so we can vote a final, final performance evaluation. I think we can all leave this room tonight knowing exactly where you stand. Satisfactory to highly satisfactory, unless a board member really blows this up, which I, I don't see. But I will start the comments with, and we're going to do it in order, so fire chief is first. Larry, if you, if you want to make any comments, do you know what Joe has written?
Yeah, I'm not going to blow it up, Michael. Obviously, this, this could be uncomfortable, but it's not. It's very comfortable because you've done such a great job. And I think the, I think, Joe, your evaluation is spot on. I do want to be sure that we remember that the way that we've been working on this, the satisfactory is doing a really good job. There's those instances where we feel you've done exceptional, but, but your performance and actually your salary is based on satisfactory. So this is a compliment, so job well done and we'll, I'll see if I have any additional comments, but that's, not going any further.
Thank you. Julie?
I, I just would say that there's no disagreement at all, and I would thank you for all your hard work, as usual, and in particular over the last couple of years that have been incredibly difficult for everybody, but in particularly for, for your department. So thank you.
Mary?
I won't repeat what they say, but I find this incredibly awkward, having worked in private industry, to be doing someone's appraisal on TV. So I just want to go on record that I think you do a great job. I've been to several things just this past seven months that you've hosted at the fire station, and you, you can just feel in a room like that, that, that you're well-respected by your people, and that says a lot.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Well, strangely, it's going to be in the same area for both chiefs. I would have advocated a bump up in personnel management in the fire department. They have generationally produced outstanding leaders. They create people in numbers that could successfully transition to the position of chief. That's a tribute to the culture of the department, but it's just as much of a reflection of the management. All it would take is one manager coming in to not take care to do that, and you'd basically level that whole culture down again. So that would be my one comment there.
Thank you, thank you, Don. I would agree with Mary, it's always difficult to give people appraisals in, in a public setting, not in this instance. And, and it's funny with the past town administrator, anyone that watched that show, it could have been a sitcom. It's, there was, there was a lot of fighting back and forth between the board and that town administrator, which made it really uncomfortable. In both instances tonight, we have, I would argue, the best on the Cape. And I think the departments speak for themselves. I think in instances like yesterday, the communication from the fire chief, it was outstanding. I think the response time for people, and I thank DPW and between, between everyone leaving, but the level of cooperation between the department heads speaks about how wonderful this town is. And, and I can't thank you enough. I've said it before, I grew up in the fire industry. My father was on for 30 years, part-time for the beginning of it and full-time at the end of it. And I have a great deal of respect for what you all do. My comments will reflect that to Joe. I don't see, I don't see many changes. So I would say, based on the comments from the board and Joe's evaluation, Dave, you can leave here tonight knowing you get your step increasing, you got a satisfactory to highly satisfactory performance evaluation with great comments from the board. Joe, as I outlined, emails to you is, is how you want it, or do you want them to Megan? Or do you want them to, who do you want them to?
I think in this case, it's appropriate to send them to me. Always copy Danielle. Always copy Danielle and Ellen, they make sure I know I got it, with the avalanche. But I, if I could put it out there, I think what I also heard this evening is that there's satisfaction, a high satisfaction amongst the board. You do have the option of now considering this process to have been the final, if you wanna do that, you can add narrative, but if the board is satisfied with your comments offered tonight, you could determine this to be your final evaluation, if that's-
How do you want the motion?
Say again?
How do you want the motion, or do you need a motion?
I don't think there's a motion. If, if the board's willing to do that, I think what you would just say is that you affirm that the fire chief is doing a satisfactory to highly satisfactory job.
That's what I affirmed. Mary?
I would, I would change that, that he's doing a highly satisfactory job.
Okay.
Which is where I was heading.
Okay. Julie?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. This whole thing is awkward.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Congratulations.
And so what this means procedurally is that the board has just concluded your final evaluation, final annual evaluation of your fire chief.
Yeah, and I would, I would ask still that the board members send their comments, because I think it's important to put them in writing, so that David has that in his file. I think that that's, in this organization, in a municipal setting, I think it's an important document to hang on to. On to the police chief. Larry?
Basically, the same comments. I guess I'm, I have to admit, I did get tired of seeing police in my, on my street this summer, because every time they showed up and met, they were tearing the street up again. But, you know, I, I think, Chief, what you've brought here is, is something we've had been looking for, for some time, and that is the training and mentoring of people, so we have what Dave and the fire department has its dimension and culture of doing, is bringing people up, so we can promote from within. That was a big step, when you reassign, so we had the captains to give a, some better experience, that's something we, I know, me personally, have been looking for, for some time. And to take that step, it changes, I think it's done a, a great move to change the culture and the positive, and so I, I would agree with, basically, the statement's consistent with a, with the fire chief. Great job. I appreciate the, the changes you've made as well.
Julie?
First of all, I'm just gonna point out that my last statement, I lumped you both in there together, and I'm surprised Don didn't point out that procedurally, that's not appropriate. So-
You can dig yourself out.
So I would like to say the same thing back again, Chief, you do a fantastic job, I'm very grateful for it, although I will say, the last couple of years, there's been those bittersweet goodbyes to Tom Gagnon and Al Bobby Hadfield, so I know that, you know, it's, it is wonderful to see your department growing, and you, you've all dealt with quite a bit over the last year and a half, especially with noise. So I thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Mary?
Again, this is, this is new to me, but I have just been struck, through all the liquor and noise conversations, how you can stay kind of above the fray, and get the whole legal thing, but you also are able to swim a little bit in the gray area, which I never knew the police could do until I met Pat Brophy, but, excuse me, that's another story. I just think you, you've done an outstanding job. To have nine people test through to get that promotion says a lot to your leadership.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree, it's a horrible thing, by the way, to be doing this this way. I do have one question, one of the rating elements, but, Chief, it doesn't change the overall, for me, unless you have your pontoons on to start walking on water, highly successful is really hard to earn, and in one element, for reasons that I will share with you, and another point, I would, I'd be deferring to satisfactory, but overall, you've done an excellent job, and we're lucky to have you.
I would echo, I would echo Mary's comments, Chief, and I know that the board, probably to your frustration, and clearly, we had a difference in opinion on, on a license tonight, but you've handled it all extremely well. It's been a very difficult time to be a police officer, to say the least, and I think every day on national news, we're reminded of that. I think you've done an amazing job with that police department in bringing people up, and in general, as, as Mary said, when you're in the police department and you're around the troops, there's a level of respect there, and I think you're doing a great job, so. So-
Can I move that we make this a highly satisfactory appraisal, overall?
Second.
So we're not gonna do, we don't have to do a motion?
No, it's not a motion.
But you're, you're saying that you want it highly satisfactory?
Yes.
We don't, we don't-
We don't-
So, so in the end, and as we did with the fire chief, I think somewhat highly satisfactory, and those would be the, the comments I would ask you to send to the, to the town administrator.
But we'd make the overall-
But we're gonna affirm that he had a successful-
Right.
-performance evaluation, and that he gets a step increase, and, and then we move on. We might not all agree that it's 100% highly satisfactory. I would say that, based on Joe's report and the board's comments, they are highly satisfactory, but each category has a different, so I would say that in both cases, it's satisfactory, in my mind, satisfactory to highly satisfactory, and, and it's a split leaning a lot more towards highly satisfactory. But across the board, I would still be satisfactory to highly satisfactory myself. Don?
Now I'm gonna put my process hat back on. There is no summary box.
There is.
The last, the last one.
Yeah, but it's, it's not checked.
It's blank, yeah.
Well, because the performance evaluation is ours, not Joe's, we just asked Joe to do the first part of it, so it would've been inaccurate for him to summarize what we're looking at tonight.
Having said that, because neither would wind up being exclusively on all rating elements, highly successful, I'm, I'm just questioning, what's the criteria to be, to check off a summary evaluation of somebody? That's what I was unclear about, even with your evaluation, it's like-
Right. My, well, first, if I could, I, I think what we all wanna emphasize for Chief Gilmet is that there was a second final evaluation that has gone exceedingly well, and if we're talking about the form, what I wanna emphasize is, this is a form that I started using with personnel bylaw managers, that I saw some value in it, and I encouraged the board to use it for me, you did, so I've been trying to, to get it out amongst the folks that I impact upon, in this instance, as your agent. I'd be more than happy to change the form going forward, but for me, it, it's not so much the, the summary, if you will, it's each element. And as I've talked before, the, every element that's in there, and I'm gonna try and do it from memory, but you've got subject matter expertise, leadership, personnel management, procurement management, and budgeting. And I've said to, to my team of managers, that in my mind, that's what makes a department head, or a division head, or certainly an executive manager, and having those skills and doing them either satisfactory, which means exactly what we would expect you to do, or in some instances, highly satisfactory, because you went above and beyond, but it purposely does not have a, a final distinction to it of unsatisfactory, satisfactory, or highly satisfactory, because I didn't use that for my direct reports, I didn't incorporate it in this one. I, I guess what I would get to is that if it's unsatisfactory, the document would, would show it in a number of instances. These gentlemen, as well as I, I recall my evaluation from you folks, they were at satisfactory to highly satisfactory across the board, and so I think that's the easiest way to say it, but does not have a summary yet, or intentional.
Don?
Okay, then, just as a summary, that's exactly what I was trying to point out. There is no criteria for us to determine anything. They both are, are doing outstanding jobs in certain areas, and at least a really good job in the others, and you're both gonna wind up with your step increases, absent a criteria, I don't know that we checked that off, because there's no way to ascertain what the tipping point is, unless it's unsatisfactory.
And for me, I wanted to get away from that numerical system that we were using, because the board members were so all over the map, I, I know there was one, Julie, you had the unfortunate task of adding that up, but we had 40s to 99s, and it made no sense at all. This, to me, especially with the commentary, says you're doing a great job, and you get your step increase. Julie, you're okay with the satisfactory, highly satisfactory?
Yeah, I think we should just approve it as they are, and, and be done, and stop torturing.
And send, and send your comments, please. Larry, you're good, you're good with that?
Well, it's kinda fun to torture them, but I'm, I'm okay with it.
It's already being tortured, we have all those liquor hearings.
Yep, absolutely, thank you, and I wanna, I wanna thank my colleagues, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
They had to be reviewed by up here, and, and they were great about it, and I appreciate that, and I don't wanna miss the opportunity to say that, not just because of this weekend and all the time we spent together, both virtually and in person, but we have a great executive management team, and these two gentlemen are the greatest examples of that, and I enjoy working with them. And I think that's a great thing for a town to be able to hear, and it's certainly a relief for me to be able to say.
Thank you. Steve, Mary, can I, can I have the motion?
Sure. I move that we vote to approve the committee's appointments recommended by the interview committee. Roseanne Shapiro, Harwich Energy and Climate Action Committee, term expires June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And a motion on D.
I move that we vote to amend the Harwich Energy and Climate Action Committee charge to five members and two alternate members.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion, Don?
Yeah, not to diminish the importance of the addition, but in general committees, we're having problems with attendants that would lead you to have quorum problems, and if we added it seven, there has to be four people that show up, and I, I really don't think it's a good idea to hold them back from meeting.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I can't argue with that. I, I do hope that we, we get, we, that leaves one additional member plus two alternatives, and I, and I still, where I am, where I started with this discussion, is I wanna be sure we have a diverse, some diversity of opinion, because we, right now, my initial feeling is, is that there's no diversity of opinion, so I think we wanna be really, we wanna be careful about that.
And I agree with you, I think this exercise, Larry, is because they can't meet legally, and we just upped them from five to seven, so until, I think when we get a waiting list, we bring this back and we vote it up again.
No, I, I say I can't disagree with the motion, I'm just making my point.
Julie?
Yeah, no, and, and I don't disagree, I mean, obviously, any kind of different opinions on committees are important, I think the problem is, we need applicants, so. I, I think that overall, we're doing what we need to for this committee.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. I would take a motion on, I'm gonna skip around a little bit, and I hope everybody that's still here is not insulted by that, but I would take a motion on F.
F. I move that we vote on the Fishware application renewals, one for Nantucket Sound Fishwares Inc., and the second for Chatham Fishwares Enterprises.
That's an affirmative recommendation.
What?
You said vote on the application, you mean to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I move that we vote to approve the applications.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion?
I, I just have one question, and I assume I know the answer, but I'm just gonna ask it anyway, is I didn't see anything negative in our packet, no issues with it, so I'm assuming that. Harbor Master, everybody's good with this?
I, I spoke to the Harbor Master, and I believe he's on to speak.
Is he on?
Yep.
Okay.
John, if you would, just any negativity with this at all, or is this a standard renewal?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, standard five-year renewal, same coordinates, same locations on both, I have no issues at all with him.
Great.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I'm skipping around, because we have another excellent department head in the room tonight that's waiting patiently, and I wanna get him home as quickly as I can.
No, no, I'm here all night, sweetie.
You're sleeping here, huh?
I'm enjoying the show.
He's serving time.
Better than TV, huh, John?
We don't, we don't do your performance evaluation. Well, I'm gonna bring back E regardless, because it's board discussion on committee charges, agenda prep, and open meeting law, and again, I, I think the, the next topics are important topics, and it's meant to start discussion, not, not make any decisions tonight, so. With that, actually, I'll take a motion on G, if I could.
I move that we vote to approve a new Class Four, Class Four Auto Repair License for V-Tech Auto Center, 805 Route 28.
Second. Moved in seconded, any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So I am going to go to H, which is discussion with John Ivesman, Town Planner on Mixed Use Housing. John, welcome and thank you. Julie, would you like to open this one?
Yeah, sure, thank you. So, so John, I, and I, we've spoke briefly about this as well, but I was looking at what just happened in Harwich Center with the additional apartment over commercial use, which I think is fantastic, because it offers more housing opportunities, and we, as a board, have talked about trying to come up with innovative approaches to additional housing, and, and look at places in town that not, and all of the town, I should say, that helps, you know, in the centralized locations, and any of the seven villages that have commercial property, why not use that potential of a foot, an existing footprint with any ability to create some additional one, two-bedroom apartments? I mean, three, it would be great, because we all know we need three as well, but I'm sure that that would be more difficult. But that's really where this kind of high-level conversation was coming from, and to tie it into the board's feel on it too, and you're the expert, so I thought it would be helpful to have that conversation.
Sure, so I, I, you know, anticipated that's what the, your comments were, so I prepared at least some, some general notes I'd, I'd go over. And the planning board, with that particular property or matter you were talking about, you know, shared your enthusiasm, and there were a number of co-benefits associated with it, from a planning perspective, perspective, housing, economic development, and certainly uses, and appropriate development is a way to keep an historic district viable. Historic district, contrary to popular opinion, isn't something that's kept under a cake dome, it's, it's a, it's a living organism, so to speak. It has to stay, you know, you have to preserve what the best of it is, but also keep it current. You know, I, I don't wanna stray too far from, from your comment, but I wanna talk a little more broadly about alternatives to single-family housing. And, you know, Harwich is actually pretty, Harwich zoning is actually pretty liberal about types of housing, other than, you know, just single-family housing, at least by special permit. Harwich, in 2020, I believe, made multifamily zoning a special permit use pretty much throughout the town. Harwich is also allowed, since I think about, since about 2010 or so, mixed-use residential development, which is, you know, typically seen as top-of-the-shop housing, where you have a kind of a commercial use at the bottom of the building. Harwich also has, for a number of years, where other towns haven't, allowed two-family uses by special permit. So, so that's all good, because the, the bones are in place, and, and that isn't true of every community, to have different types of housing uses and development throughout the town. Harwich zoning also has, it gives the planning board the flexibility through site plan review to, to, as happened in this Harwich Center project, to look at the particular circumstances of, of a case, and determine whether, say, parking is appropriate to that use, given the all, you know, attendant circumstances, rather than just kind of slavishly applying, you know, a parking schedule, that's really developed for generalized uses throughout the town, and, you know, other, otherwise requiring a variance, if a, say, an historic building on a very small lot in an historic district can't meet parking, which is really intended for like a shopping mall, for instance, so I'm happy to say that site plan review also offers that. So why don't we have some of these housing uses? And, and one of the things that comes to mind is, and I don't know really the way around this, is sometimes the limitation is environmental. So Harwich, like many Cape towns, relies on public drinking water wells, and pretty much the whole eastern portion of the town is what's called a Zone Two, or Wellhead Protection Area. So inasmuch as you can do something under zoning, or at least you can get it by special permit, that doesn't, you know, it doesn't give you the permits or the approvals you'll need under other parallel but independent regulations, like, like health regulations. I think there's an interesting possibility that exists with the sewer, and as sewer, you know, you start seeing sewer in other areas of the town. What, what I think the board would basically have to do is look at its sewer regulations. Right now, under the sewer regulations, you- Right now, under the sewer regulations, you basically say you get the flow that was in place under Board of Health regulations, which ties into Title V in 2016. What I've seen other towns do under their sewer regulations, their flow-neutral provisions of their sewer regulations, is to give priority or, you know, anticipatory approval for flows to encourage certain types of uses in certain parts of the town. So if what you wanted to see was infill development, housing density on already-developed sites, you know, it's something you could look at as the sewer plan matures, as your, as the update of the comprehensive wastewater management plan proceeds. And I think one of the things that's most important is looking at actual flow that's sent to a treatment facility rather than just Title V, modeled Title V flows. Because I think what communities have seen time after time is modeled Title V flows are very different than actual water use and actual flows going into a treatment facility. Title V flows are actually much higher. But you kind of have to let your sewer plan and your treatment kind of mature and see the results from that. Then it'll allow you to make decisions in the future and perhaps change your sewer regulations if wastewater is really the limitation, to help guide the types of development you want to see in the town. The other thing I'd recommend from the housing perspective, all these housing-related types that I mentioned, multifamily, mixed-use residential development, two-family, is it's well-time to look at the zoning bylaws as a whole and kind of fix some of the inconsistencies and unintended consequences in the drafting and the zoning. There hasn't really been a comprehensive rewrite for probably 20 years or so. You know, there's no logic to some of the outcomes in the zoning. In fact, multifamily housing is much easier to do than a two-family dwelling. There's not really a reason for that. You know, one of the things that was adopted for, with multifamily housing is, you know, there's a 40,000-square-foot lot area, for instance. But if you are infilling, reusing a building and infilling units there, there's no minimum lot size. But for a two-family dwelling, there's always a 40,000-square-foot lot size. I think that's just a matter of having one regulation in place, then having another regulation in place, and you never really look to conform them. So I think it would be helpful at some time to look at all the kind of alternative housing types in the bylaw and look at how they compare to one another and make sure that there's either equity between them or that the differences between them are intentional. You know, mixed-use development, for instance, has, there's no sort of incentive to do mixed-use development in an existing building as there, as you could say there is in a multifamily. But there is an older requirement that, in addition to minimum lot area, there's a requirement to have five or 10,000 square feet per residential unit in a mixed-use residential development. You know, I don't really know why that is because even in the zoning, you're required to otherwise meet health regulations. So like multifamily was developed in 2020, basically, there's a zoning requirement that you can get the number of units that you can lay out on that lot if you comply with parking and Title V regulations. That's the limitation on the number of units in multifamily in Harwich. So we might look to do that with, you know, mixed-use residential development. Also, in the districts where you have, where you allow certain things, I know that there was a, there was a lot of unhappiness about a potential project in East Harwich a few years ago. But unfortunately, I think it also drove what we allow in certain districts. So you can do mixed-use residential development, you can do two-family dwellings, but you can't do multifamily residential, which is just three dwellings or more up in the East Harwich area. So sometimes you have to look past that project that everybody doesn't like and think in kind of general terms, does this fit up in that area? Because my last comment I'll make about housing types is, under zoning today, they're dependent on the building in which they're proposed. So rather than just saying multifamily is three or more units on a lot, it's three or more units in a building. Same goes for a two-family. And then multifamily, mixed-use residential development, the way it's drafted in the zoning conceives of it always being done in a single building. I can imagine as we, you know, we try to reuse the developed lots we already have, and those developed lots in a commercial zone may have a number of buildings on it. You know, why not put one residential unit in one building, two in another? And then have, if you have a third building, use that for your commercial. Right now, our zoning wouldn't allow that without a variance. So it's very specific as to the forms in which these uses might take, the buildings, rather than the overall development on the lot. And I think the way planning is headed, and I don't see a reason why we wouldn't want to do this in Harwich, is there may be a variety of adaptive reuses of properties that we haven't even thought about yet. You know, we don't, Harwich isn't that community, but a lot of communities would say a mall are reusing those for housing. You know, and there's a lot of potentials for things like that. So I think looking at our sewer regulations as it moves forward, seeing what you might want to incentivize, and then just, again, working on the zoning to make sure it's really saying what we want it to as a community, and also taking advantage of excess capacity or existing buildings or developed properties that might be located in our commercial zones would be helpful.
Thank you. And only just to clarify, because I don't want everything in this sort of high-level, you know, clarification that not only in the areas that we have sewer, but say down in Harwich Port where we don't have sewer, but we have a lot of commercial space, but, you know, and again, I don't know every business and what they have. But if they don't have an apartment or a couple of, whatever, and if they have the ability to do that, I mean, it just centralizes housing, gives you transportation, gives you somewhere to work. And I just think that we should be looking at that in a different level. I mean, yes, we've looked at Chloe's path. Yes, the trust is working on the Marsaline property, which would be a totally different type of development, which would be fantastic. But overall, I think we also have the ability, I'm hoping, with the discussion starting here, to look at our zoning and to figure out how we address other areas of town, where we can put pockets of some units so that we're not just trying to cram a million in in one spot. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, you know, your point of bringing in the trust as well. The way you succeed at housing for a community is through a multi, you know, a multi-headed approach. You, you know, something the trust might be looking at is rather than just raw land development, looking at buildings in the town, you know, to acquire where you can put a number of units in. Orleans has just done this, or they're in the early stages of doing this, with the Governor Prince and the Cape Cod Five Sents Savings Headquarters. So there's some creative things you can do with your, on the public side, but you also have to understand the private side is a driver and achieves many of the ends you want to achieve as a public entity through no cost at all to the taxpayer or to the government.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Great, great comments. I like the creative approach. Some of these we've talked, and on past meetings, we've talked about. My only input is that, you're going to hate to hear this, but I'd like to hear you talk to us about this over and over again, because people don't like change. And the more we can bring it out to the public and encourage discussions about what we can be doing, the better off we are. So I appreciate Julie bringing this up, and we just need to be almost as often as we can, Michael, on the agenda.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you. I don't have any comments other than, I guess I need to look at zoning because I don't know a whole lot about it. So I've got something new on my to-do list.
Don?
Go in with your eyes wide open and call for help if you'd like.
I was just going to say, be careful what you wish for. It's a dark, dense place. Interestingly, Mary was on the call today. The trust, just so everybody is clear on this, is discussing, as part of its action plan, about what it would look like in terms of relative priorities of us building new versus doing just what you're talking about, rehabbing or retrofitting, and there needs to be a place for that too. Because I disagree that you have to throw 100 units in one place and then walk away, and that's it. It really has to be, as you describe it, something that fits within the overall structure of the town and the people will, you know, buy into. So thank you for all the comments. They're very pertinent.
Because you're still up, I'm going to hold my comments for the next topic, but with the understanding that it can blend with the one we're still in. I'd like to open up the next one, John.
Okay.
If you could, if you could talk about state zoning related to housing, which I think we just talked about.
Yeah.
Go ahead and add what you want, and then let me fire away.
I think I understand the specific question. I, you know, Danielle and I talked about the agenda topic wording.
Spot zoning.
Yeah, it's as broad as possible so some, so things could fit within it. But I understand the specific question to be spot zoning, and more specifically, for affordable housing. But let me just start with the concept of spot zoning first and what that is, because sometimes there's misunderstandings about what spot zoning is. And in fact, courts in the Commonwealth, you know, have taken, I would say, a different position or fine-tuned their position over the last few decades. So understanding spot zoning first is understanding the State Zoning Act's relationship to local zoning bylaws. The State Zoning Act basically is not enabling in nature, but what it does is it sets minimum standards or limitations or protections that apply Commonwealth-wide. And then municipalities can develop their own zoning bylaws or ordinances so long as those bylaws or ordinances don't conflict with those minimum protections or floors that are set out in the State Zoning Act. One of the floors set out in the State Zoning Act, Section 4, is something called a uniformity clause. There has to be uniformity as between uses and development that are similarly situated in a particular district. So spot zoning is a variation on that, because what spot zoning is, it's illegal, but it's basically an allegation that similarly situated properties have been treated differently or a particular property has been singled out for either beneficial or restrictive treatment that doesn't serve a public purpose. And spot zoning is always going to be in the context of a rezoning or zoning amendment. So a town, for instance, will propose a rezoning or a zoning amendment, and after the zoning is done, either immediately or sometime down the line, someone will challenge it as spot zoning. Things courts will often look at is the size of the property that's been rezoned. None of these are determinative considerations, but they're all things a court might look at. So the smaller the property, the more it might be suspect for spot zoning. The more it benefits a particular owner or particular use, the more it might look like spot zoning. The more different a zone is from its surrounding uses and development, the more it might look like spot zoning. But over the past couple decades, courts have become less reluctant to, they have to entertain them, but to basically allow challenges of spot zoning to succeed. Basically, what you have to show now is that there's a public purpose for the rezoning or zoning amendment that a town has done. Basically, because towns are given great deference over their legislative initiatives and the zoning towns will come up with. And those public purposes can be purposes or goals that are set out in the town's own zoning bylaw, in the town's planning, like through a local comprehensive plan, or there are some public purposes which are basically cognizable through Massachusetts law. And I'll get to that affordable housing question through this. Very early on in Chapter 40B, it was established in 1969. In 1973, the highest court in the Commonwealth, the Supreme Judicial Court, faced a question. Is 40B on its face spot zoning? Because of course, what you can do in 40B is you can waive zoning regulations. And so the development that it's actually proposed or approved might look very different from its surrounding development. It also, it almost looks singled out. This was a Hanover case, Hanover Zoning Board of Appeals versus the Housing Appeals Committee. And the Supreme Judicial Court ultimately decided that 40B is not categorically spot zoning for two reasons. A, 40B is a statutory scheme to allow essentially differences between properties. In the same way that a zoning board of appeals, when it grants a variance, that's a legislative authorization. So a variance is not spot zoning, even though a variance basically allows you to do something that the zoning doesn't authorize. I think the more important rule that comes out of that Supreme Judicial Court case is affordable housing is considered, per se, or categorically, a public purpose. So basically, the state of the law in the Commonwealth, even though that case is from 1973, is a 40B, you know, 40B as the law and a 40B development does not constitute spot zoning as a matter of law. So, you know, it's long-winded, but that's kind of a talk about spot zoning, so I...
That's great. So, John, this comes up, obviously, you've been approached, as I've been approached, probably by the same people, and they have great interest in our affordable housing emergency. And I think I can use the word emergency because that's the topic of the entire Cape and state. I've said from the beginning, I think the 40B laws are antiquated, and I don't think that they were ever meant for the condition that we're in right now on Cape Cod. And I think all it is, is a pass for a developer to be able to build what he wants on a much smaller lot. And the benefit to this town is 20% of the units for the first year. And I don't see how moving, and I'll pick on Chloe's path, allowing 96 units with only 24 of them being for Harwich or preference on Harwich, and allowing the rest of the people to burden our already overburdened services, how that does anything for this town. So to Julie's topic, the last topic, and to this topic, we've been approached by Harwich residents that want to build Harwich housing. And when we look at the Marsaline property, it's my hopes at least that we build something for Harwich people. And in order to do that, we have to do something with our zoning. And because of the affordable housing emergency, I don't see how the board can't vote or can't support through planning some sort of restrictions on these lots. So in the one case, I'm thinking somebody has a lot and they want to put four units on it. They want to build them at cost and basically give the land to whoever buys the house, and they'll forever be affordable, and they'll have to go back into the affordable pool. Now, for me, for our police department, fire department, schoolteachers, landscapers, workers, just as we did off of Driftwood in East Harwich, we gave the lots with a deed restriction. It seems to me that we could solve our own housing crisis if we got to solve our own housing crisis. Instead, we've been tasked with this fake number of 10% in a law that was written in 1969, and we're never going to get to the point that we need. And I'll say it, we're 15 years late on this. And I think we're very quickly following Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, and other communities. We're not going to solve the affordable housing problem with a 40B. It's just, we're going to get to our 10%, but we're still going to be looking for schoolteachers. We're still going to be looking for firefighters, and we're still going to be looking for police officers and landscapers, restaurant workers, or we're going to bus or fly them in like Nantucket does. So I've said it, we need to control our own destiny, and I'll keep saying it. But how much, how many more years are we going to have this conversation? And if we don't start doing things, you know, and I applaud Julie for bringing this forward, if we don't start doing things on a help Harwich level and just count on 40B, we're going to get nowhere, except for our already overburdened departments and services are going to continue to overburden, but will please the state. So I guess the, I'll turn it over to the board for comments and questions, and I haven't called on Joe yet. But I think time is of the essence, right? And there's a lot of very important things we're working on, local comprehensive plan, wastewater. And Julie and I had a brief conversation about this. And I know that there's been a lot of controversy in our comprehensive wastewater management plan as it relates to East Harwich, and people thinking that we want to overdevelop East Harwich because of the sewer system. I've never been in that camp. I'll never be in that camp. But for everybody that's screaming about affordable housing, we have to make some choices and some decisions on development for affordable housing, for Harwich people. And we need to do it sooner than later because we're already 15 years too late. So timeline, I guess, and I'll bring this back, given the hour tonight, I don't think we're going to talk about this until...
You've said so many things, I just want to...
The wee hours.
Now I want to talk.
No, and I love that. I'll stay as long as you want. I'm not sure Joe will or Jamie will, but Jamie's a no. So I'm going to, I'll open it up to Don, but I think that this conversation needs to come back, to Larry's point, next week and the week after, and to Julie's point, all seven villages. But how do we control, and what can we do now to control our own destiny and create some real affordable housing? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you're chopping it a bit, but 40B, per se, isn't really the major problem because part of this has to do, for instance, the Marsaline property. It's where the money comes from. So the CPC regulations by the state tell you that you can build... Uh, so the CPC regulations by the state tell you that you can build sixty percent and eighty percent, that's it. And if you start getting involved with like Pine Oaks where they had HUD money, there are major strings attached to what you can and can't do and who's the, where the eligibility is. One of the things we're going to have to consider doing, which is why we need to aggregate money, is for us, uh, outsiders CPC to create a bank account, uh, so that when we build something, we can condition it, uh, to who we want to have in it. Forty B is just merely a way of getting more density, and there are hostile ones, as John knows, and there are, uh, friendly ones, which the town itself is probably going to wind up with a friendly one at, uh, the Marsline property. So they're interrelated parts, and it's kind of a complicated subject to discuss, but we need to have a plan that both gives us money and flexibility.
Mary?
Um, I, I certainly agree on the importance of this topic and keeping it in the forefront. Um, I'm, I'm in the minority, I don't think density is a four-letter word. I was also the one that voted.
You're absolutely correct.
I think we need a little bit of density. But I agree, we also need to scatter it around town. We need it, Michael's right, we're, we're, I don't know if it's fifteen years, but we're, we're way late in this dance. So yeah, I, I'd like to see you here every week to talk about this.
And, and just to clarify, I'm, I'm for density as well, as long as it's density for Harwich and it makes sense for our departments and our town and our residents and the kids that want to stay here. I'm okay with density. I'm not okay with opening it up to everybody and, and not, not in an element way, in, in a realistic way. Our departments are way overburdened.
Yeah.
Our budget is growing constantly, and everybody is screaming for help, and it all comes down to housing. Julie?
No, and I agree, I, I don't have, uh, an aversion to density, you know, but, but again, I think it's needed everywhere. And, and so I think, you know, whatever way we can come up with different ideas along with some increased density, I just think we need to look out of the box, I, I think we're way late to the party, and I think that we, we literally are watching the Nantucketization of the rest of the Cape. And if we don't do something now and we don't consistently work on this, and, and you know better than all of us, changing the zoning bylaws is a, is a multitude of steps, and it takes some time. So time is of the essence, we are in an emergency and we need to move quickly, and we need to move forward with whatever public hearings, whatever way we can to empower you to help us. And that's the way I see it, is that, that there's stuff to be done, we just need to do it. We need to grapple with the, the processes that we need to follow.
Larry?
Yeah, I, I like your previous discussion better. And that's because I don't, uh, pay a lot of attention, nor do I think we should pay a lot of attention to the state forty B process. It's not getting us where we want to be. We have a lot of places we have to move and we can, and we're not going to change, I'm not confident we're going to change that, but we can do a lot of the things you talked about. Also, uh, in terms of density, uh, in saying I don't like the state that much, I do like their emphasis on so-called smart growth. Because, you know, we should be looking, in my opinion, we should be looking at areas where we do have higher density. And the trade-off then is we have areas where we have open space, where it's appropriate. So we try to have it both ways. And so density is, is a proper term if we, if we know where we're doing it. And people buy, and then we trade that off for open space, and we can, that does a lot of things for us. Gives us more housing, it decreases, uh, sewer costs, if you will, it helps transportation. And right now, we're stuck in this example, this forty square feet lot size, which may not make any sense, and we need to rethink that. But that's going to take a lot of discussion to make that go forward, but that's where we have to be.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, uh, the basic comment I'll make about forty B is everybody calls it an affordable housing statute. It's not, it's a, it's a housing production statute. And it, and honestly, all the things you hate about it is, is its purpose. It's supposed to create labor mobility, it's supposed to create in migration. And maybe that all sounds great in theory, but what you lose track of is the people who actually live in your community. And there is a way to stave off forty B. You can actually do a housing production plan and you can, you can get those units developed. We did a housing production plan, great, in two thousand and fifteen, but there are hardly any units produced. That is one of the ways to establish what's called a safe harbor to forty B. So that if you, if you are, it's ten percent of your year-round housing stock, but if you do a housing production plan and you create so many units per year, someone tries to do a forty, forty B and waive zoning, you can tell them no. But you have to establish that safe harbor. And one of the ways to do it is a housing production plan and doing your local approach to affordable housing and housing production. So I look at a lot of these neighborhoods Harwich used to have, even up in East Harwich, like Sherwood, right? They're like quarter acre lots, half acre lots, they're lovely. Um, and for many years, that, that served as affordable housing. The problem in some of these small lots is now the, the wastewater problem and the watershed problem is big, it's pronounced. So can we return to the past in a way and have smaller lots, thus with smaller, uh, smaller lots with smaller houses, maybe more naturally affordable, but pick them up with sewer? That's the sort of communication we have to have with all the residents because it's not just a matter of allowing the developers to get to the trough. Developers are the conduit to get there. And thank God they are because housing shouldn't, we shouldn't be out there with hard hats and hammers on as public officials. We have to rely on that, uh, private sector. Um, but maybe that's one of the ways to go at it and convincing people that, um, you know, if we have this density, the best way to handle it is with appropriate infrastructure. Title V really does nothing, treats for bacteria, but doesn't treat for any of the nutrients or protect water quality, drinking water quality. So I'm excited for a conversation, um, like this, and I, I hear what you're saying that, um, you know, forty B sounds good in theory, but it doesn't take care of our very local issues. It's not intended to. It's intended to deal with a, a regional problem. Forty B is a regional statute, in fact. So, um, I can understand some of the heartache and happy to talk about it and.
So I'm going to, we will, I'm going to call on Dawn, and then we're going to move on from this topic, and I will bring it back in the near future. To bring it back, I would like the board's feedback on what we want to talk about next, um, so that John can have some bullet points going into it. But I, I personally think an action soon i- is needed because we keep talking about these emergencies. And my only comment on the forty thousand square foot lot is, with real estate values what they are, cut it in half. It's still going to be too expensive for a lot of people to buy. So that, to me, is not really the, the option, right? It is creating a whole bunch more small lots. It's, maybe we take some of the four hundred acres that are owners unknown and miscellaneous parcels, and we, and we sell some and build some and, and strategically think this through so that we can take care of our housing problem and not the ten percent. Because John, I personally don't believe those people will work here. I believe now this is a retirement. It, there, there's nothing to preclude more retirees from coming down or Boston workers that want to commute. There's no guarantee for Harwich, and we can talk about those projects all we want. I, I just, I can't support them because I don't think it helps our emergency. But I'll put those in my own notes. Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to quickly throw one more log on the forty B fire here because we've, I've had this discussion before. I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that you're right, it's a regional thing, and yet we don't get credit regionally. I would love to be able to contribute to the underground mall in Orleans and get some credit for it regionally because that's a pre-existing dense, uh, densely built place that will probably not be controversial to convert into what they want to do. The, but there is nothing in it for anybody, uh, who's not in that town. And that has to change, and I know that it has to come through, uh, state statute. So we need to have continued discussions, and we need to press the legislative delegation that it makes sense that, uh, to delineate, to delineate the credit for, for a ten-minute drive to Harwich is, is just totally ridiculous.
Yeah, I think.
It could help.
I think the one thing I would, I, I agree with you, the one thing I would, uh, think through with the legislative delegation is, um, for legislation to be successful, um, the reason there's a town-wide burden requirement to the regional problem is so that you don't have towns just pay to get rid of the issue. So how do you handle that in the legislation? Because, you know, you, you don't want to say, everybody's going to go live in Hyannis.
There's got to be something in between that and nothing.
Yeah, because it is called, forty B is called the anti-snob law.
Joe, I haven't called on you at all tonight, do you have anything, Dan?
Um, I think you folks would be okay with that, um, very quickly I do. Um, uh, because there was a reference to the housing production plan. And so, you know, there's, there's some angst in this conversation, and I can understand why, but I see a glimmer of hope, and, and it's, um, a happy confluence of having John as our Director of Planning and Community Development, um, working with the trust, re-establishing the Housing Committee. So right now, the Town of Harwich is actively seeking comments and is actively working on revising our comprehensive wastewater management plan. At the same time that we're going to be seeking, uh, leadership and direction on the local comprehensive plan, and as the Affordable Housing Trust and the sponsorship of Selectman Anderson and members of the Housing Committee, we've already started talking about that housing production plan from, from six or seven years ago. So the good news is, we're looking at those documents now, we're bringing them up to date because those are going to be our user manuals, those are going to be our guiding principles, those are going to be the things that we have to first, uh, initiate and say what our priorities are in those, and then execute them over time. You know, the good news is we have them, the bad news is some of those documents we have and didn't execute. So right now, we have them all timing out at the same time. And again, I would never strive for that, but I think the fact that it happened, we can turn that into our benefit.
Thank you, Joe. And thank you, John. Really appreciate it. And, and board members, please, everything that we're talking about, because we can wait for all these documents to be done and these plans to be done, and then we'll be two more years behind how far behind we are already. So we really need to start an action plan with a timeline if we're going to do anything before it's too late. And I wouldn't think Chatham, I'm sure, didn't think that their median price house would be one point three million this year, but it is. Joe, why don't you start the next one, I'm still going to, um, hold the other one back. So the next one is discussion, Town Administrator to provide update on short-term rentals.
Well, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll certainly do the introduction, but I know we have, uh, the gentleman that spurred the discussion or is trying to spur the discussion. And that is where we are as a town on short-term rentals. And, and I know that the board has some materials in your packet. And, and what I would emphasize is, uh, you recall that at our October two thousand and twenty-one special town meeting, um, through the board, town meeting approved changing, uh, the hotel motel short-term rental tax from four to six percent, which will go into effect, uh, later. But there, there's several different things that are going on, if I could say that. Some of what Mr. Kelleher, if I can refer to the speaker that will come up shortly, uh, is talking about is absolutely short-term rental, but it's short-term rental as the, uh, Commonwealth considers it, uh, and considers it since two thousand and nineteen. What we have in Harwich, uh, and I think you folks would know far better than I, uh, but what we have is a general bylaw that talks about rental dwellings, and, and the town enacted that ten years before short-term rental. So for me, I think the issue is, the town had something in place that dealt with rental. The Commonwealth now deals with short-term rentals, and I think, uh, to hear from the speaker, we're probably going to try and ask, how do we bring that all up to date?
Thank you, Joe. Mark, do you want to join us? Just state, state your name for the record.
Mark Kelleher, West Howard, thank you, and I'll try and be brief because I know you're going late. Jamie, if we could have the map of Howard. Anyway, it's just short-term rentals. If you rent out your house for less than thirty-one days, it's a short-term rental. Uh, if you do that, you have to register with the Department of Revenue. If you do it for less than fourteen days a calendar year, you don't have to pay any taxes. So if you've, if you rent anything out for less than thirty-one days, you have to register with the state, and I know there's some question, but you should register with the town as well. Howard has about six hundred, this is from Host Compliance, which Barnstable uses. They have about six hundred and fifty units of short-term rentals that they pick up off online searches. The Department of Revenue is about the same figure.
So are you talking about Barnstable now or are you talking about Howard?
Well, I'm talking about Howard.
Okay, so we have six hundred.
That's Howard, six hundred and fifty units from Host Compliance, DOR is about the same thing.
Thank you.
Our registrations are quite a bit less than that, less than a hundred. Uh, as terms of comparison, neither Chatham nor Brewster even tracks, uh, short-term rentals. Um, but I think the thing about the short-term rentals is, I first came upon it, it was not an issue with me, but it's, this summer, we had tremendous crowds at this one beachfront house. Uh, big trash issues, didn't know who to call. Where my mother lives, just this past year, a nice ranch house, two-bedroom, sold for three hundred. Uh, minor repairs, sold for six hundred, full-time, short-term rental. And from what I've found in talking to people, it's an increasing trend with these prices. You're going to see more and more of these rentals. And I think short-term rentals, uh, just bring, they're a recipe for more crowds, noise, and trash issues. Um, so one of the, a solution that I've seen Barnstable does, and that's, that's in your packet, but a solution that Barnstable has is they've enlisted this company called Host Compliance. They're all AI and computers, they can search and, uh, we need a vacation and verbo, and they can pick up who's advertising for short-term rentals in Howard. They can actually send a letter, if you're not registered in that town, to you, the owner, and say, by the way, you're registering, uh, you're advertising a short-term rental in Howard, you need to register in the Town of Howard. So they really kind of have a great system in that way. Um, and as a matter of fact, and that's an example of the letter, they give evidence. When Har- uh, Barnstable, um, instituted this, they went up to almost ninety-five percent compliance of people registering. So you could do some rough figuring, if Howard is short about five hundred units roughly of registrations at fifty dollars, so we have a potential, if we use this system, to collect up to twenty-five thousand dollars. The whole reason I'm bringing this to you is, um, you know, I read in the newspaper about there's a shortage of police. I think by utilizing a service like this Host Compliance where you get everybody registered, you have, you put the onus on the owner or investor to get that first call. In other words, if I see trash, I don't have to wait till Monday to the health department as they, this company Host Compliance has a one-eight-hundred or they have a, a compliance line. It's a local number in Barnstable. You call it up, they call the owner of that property, say, you've got a problem with either noise or trash, and they call back in thirty minutes later and see if it's been corrected. Then they send a, a message to the town to report that. But you know, a lot of these people doing short-term rentals, they don't know what's going on with them, but if they get a call, they have a, they have an agreement with this owner, and they can hold back a security deposit. So that, that's what I think is the value of this compliance program. You s- you, uh, put the onus on the owner or investor to respond to complaints first, and you reduce the need for police, you know, the police to get involved, at least initially. I think there's secondarily, there's a, there's, that's the example of how much compliance they did in Barnstable when they sent these letters out. I think secondarily, you will have increased tax compliance with this. Most of these online places, they have to pay the sales tax because the verbo, they pick it up. But I've heard of several cases where people can do rentals on, um, Craigslist, uh, Facebook, person-to-person, and you're not getting that revenue. I think people get a sense when they see, we're registering everybody in town, as Barnstable does, and Dennis and Yarmouth are pretty good too, they'll, they'll, you'd get more compliance. So that's all I really wanted to say, I think there's, that's an example right there of the letter that the owner would get. You're advertising in, on, uh, online, there's a copy of your unit, you need to register the Town of Howard. So, um, I'm happy to share with John some of the research I've done, what the other towns have done, but I think it's a, I think it's a kind of a, a winner for Howard, you wouldn't have to spend that much money out of pocket. You'd get it from registration fees, and the following year, um, some of the initial registration money you'd have to do, you'd already have that, uh, database of who's registered. And you just have to do a compliance monitoring every year to see who's new. So I think it would help the town with this summer coming up, if we could get going, with just, uh, you know, relieving the burden on the police department primarily.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, you got a question?
Didn't I read in there too that we could use ARPA funds to pay for this?
Yes, several other towns have used ARPA funds, yes.
And I also thought I read that some of it you need to do for the first year, but then beyond that, you probably only need them to do the, the scanning and reporting.
Agreed, like on that, the, on the, uh, cost sheet that unsolicited, I didn't solicit prices because that's not really my role as a citizen. But you just have to take the first three or four the first year. And then after that, you can drop off some of the services and just get compliance monitoring with it. You'll be adding people to your database, and you'll perhaps keep up the, the complaint line, so.
Thank you.
Mark, as promised, I told you I would get this onto the agenda, give it, given the late hour, I would suggest that you send the information in your research to Town Administrator through, through the office. through the office. And then I would suggest that the board, if the board is interested, when the Town Administrator gets caught up on a few of the other things that are priority, outline what this will cost us and we'll come back for a much longer conversation.
Great.
If that pleases the board?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes? Joe?
So, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Kelleher's efforts and certainly presenting one of the solutions that's out there. I'm familiar with that vendor, which I believe is Granicus. They're well-known in the municipal marketplace for a number of software applications that they provide. So, this is no different than one of their suite of services. My concern and, or my, my feeling of the impediment right now, though, is that we have an existing general bylaw that speaks to rental dwellings, which does not get to any level of what's being contemplated here or even what's being contemplated at the Commonwealth. Meaning, you have a database at the Commonwealth of 600-something units, if you will, and we as a town, I think, have, say, 40 or 50. That's apples and oranges. It's completely different, they're not related. The only thing that connects the two is the word rental. So, if the board is considering this, time is of the essence because I think what we'd have to do is probably take an article to delete Chapter 230 Rental Dwellings under the general bylaws. I did some quick research, Town of Fairhaven, which I know isn't close, but they were the most recent town to get Attorney General approval to their general bylaws to do a short-term rental. So, there's any number of things that we could look at. The question is, is this a priority of the board? Having said that, I don't want to be the wet blanket, not just because of the hour, but given the process, there is no way we'd be able to impact upon this summer. Because the bylaw review process itself, if we had a town, any change to the bylaw, it takes anywhere from three to six months for the Attorney General to review it before it can go into effect. So, given the timing of a town meeting, we'd be literally just coming out of summer. So, it has merit, but the question really is, what does the town want to do? And we have to first start with our bylaws.
Thank you, Joe.
The software application, I think, is, there's any number of things we can grab and I'm, I'm never averse to technology.
So, I'm gonna, Mark's gonna get you the research. You put your thoughts together, I'll re-agenda. We have a more, more in-length conversation about it.
Sure.
Obviously, there's a lot of very important things going to town meeting this year, a lot that aren't done yet. And I, I'm afraid of adding something else to the plate of, of staff, especially if we're gonna contemplate any zoning changes. But there's an awful lot. But let's have the conversation and I will do that within the next few weeks. The seventh is dedicated to budget, so it would be after the seventh. I'm gonna jump back up to E. Board Discussion Committee Charges Agenda Prep and Open Meeting Law Requirements. The only action I would like to come out of this tonight, given the hour, is to task Town Administrator through staff to set up open meeting law training for our committees and anyone else that wants to join. KP Law offers that as a service, but there's a lot of questions about agendas. There's a lot of questions about how to run a meeting. There's a lot of meetings that I would say are not run right, not called to order right. Going now that we're doing remote participation, just roll call votes. So, I, I think it's time to get two or three classes if we can. So, the ones that can't attend Monday night could attend Wednesday night. But I would speak to KP Law and try and get something on the books so that we can start training our committees. The board agree with that?
Yeah.
So, Joe, if we could make that call. And then I put, I had, Danielle is just, not Danielle on this one, Ellen just continues to wow me with what she's coming up with. So, in front of you tonight is, is the Committee Handbook. And this is, this part of it, Appendix C, is related to charges. She's highlighted and made notes. I'm not sure who we want to, to work on this, if all of us want to do this. But there's Architectural Advisory Committee. We disbanded that seven years ago, I believe. Can we remove it? There's Board of Assessors, where to find the charge. So, she is looking high and low for charges. There's a bunch of charges that don't exist and there's a lot of antiquated charges. So, I would guess that the liaison to each committee should work with them. And I know we sent that as a questionnaire this year, when we asked for the annual reports, any changes you want to see in your charge? And the only one was traffic safety that wanted to change in their charge. And some of these charges, if you read through them, it's not really what the committees are working on. So, we have to update the charges or go back to tell the committee, you have to work within your charge. So, it's a giant process, but we, I think this is something that we have to do. And Ellen's gotten us to a point where it's all right in front of us. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It would be a little more helpful because there are different ways that committees get formed at their inception. It, I don't know whether you want to give Ellen her spare time another homework assignment but, or whether you want the Charter Review Committee, but there are, there are named committees in the charter which would require a charter change if we started to make a different charge out of it. And then there are also ones that we created that were outside of the charter. It would be helpful to know which were which here for all of us. Because we're not all in the weeds.
So, I, I would, I would say, Don, and any board member, digest this and send me that comment or send it to Ellen so that she can start working on it. She's doing the best she can to pick up a whole bunch of work and go through files.
This is tremendous work.
Right, to find it. So, let's not send on a wild goose chase the ones that you know of. Can we all just give our input and start checking off some of these boxes?
Yeah.
And that's, go ahead.
Some of them are highlighted and then there's a comment, like page one, Architectural Advisory Committee, can this be removed? But some of them are highlighted and there's no note. Is there any significance to the highlight?
So, I know like second page, Brooks Academy Museum Commission, nothing found. She just can't find the charge for them.
Right. I get that if she's got something in red, but the ones, like the first one, Agricultural Commission, it's highlighted, but there's nothing there that says what the problem is. And Bikeways isn't highlighted. So, I figure there's something about agricultural that...
And I, and in my conversations with her, it's, is that the correct charge? Is that the most? That charge is very, very old and that's been an inactive committee.
Okay.
So, I, I know we're just ramping that committee up, but does that committee charge need to be updated?
Right.
And I think that she's just pointing out that that's a really old charge.
Okay. And the ones that aren't highlighted, she's comfortable that it's current and okay?
Yeah, but I think each one of us should talk to our committees and say, is this what you're doing?
Right. Okay.
And even the Trails Committee, we got rid of that.
We did. So, notes to Ellen if you can.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a lot of work.
Joe, that's okay?
Yep. I think she'd appreciate that, actually.
She continues to wow.
All right. Last, Discussion Impossible Vote to Send a Letter Opposing Holtech International Proposal for Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station Regarding Cape Cod Bay. There is a sample letter in the packet. Association for Preservation at Cape Cod, Andrew Gottlieb, the Executive Director. This was a suggestion by them that each town encourages this to be written. Don?
I'm gonna cut to the chase. I'd like, I'd like to move for us to support the letter and sign it and send it.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay.
And I'm gonna vote against it because it makes, it doesn't make sense. And my, let me, I know it's gonna vote, so I don't want to take a lot of time, but it seems to be more of a general reaction against nuclear power plants and specific concern about this, getting rid of this wastewater. And let me tell you why I say that. One is, we tend to think of radioactivity being the U-235, which is, you know, long, this is actually tritium, which we use in medical. It's an offshoot of that. So, it's, the other thing that concerned me is, is that they talk about releasing a million gallons of wastewater. Where if you do some quick math, math, on Cape Cod Bay is, I got 604 square miles. Maximum depth of 400 feet. If you just, you know, do a rough calculation, you say you have that area, 100 square feet, you have 25 billion gallons you're putting that 1 million in. They're gonna, they're gonna put it out at 20,000 gallon doses, you have it properly mixed. So, I would argue that, you know, the impact is, is nil based on that. My concern is, is that by just lumping this together as one item, they're not taking the time to look at what the other options are and how that measures up to it. If they have to do something with it, is it more detrimental to a truck somewhere? Worried about, everyone's worried about global warming and gases and stuff or storage. I, I don't, you know, I just don't feel it's well-thought-through. It's just a kind of a knee-jerk reaction, well, it's a nuclear power plant, we hate it, so let's penalize them. So, I'm gonna have to be outside looking in on this one and vote against it.
Thank you, Larry. My, my comment was, they're already and they have been doing this for years and years and years and years and they're permitted to do this.
Yeah. That's the other item.
That's another item. I, I personally think they shouldn't dump anything, no matter how nil it is in Cape Cod Bay. But currently, they're permitted to do so and they're doing it under their permit, which is heavily regulated. So, I'm 50/50 at best. Any further discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having, having lived the first 20 years of my life pretty much under the Canadian power grid coming through our backyard, everything is just A minor something or other, but I lost a friend when I was five years old to leukemia and there was a high, high amount of background problems in that area. We know that there were background problems because of the military base on Cape Cod. I don't feel comfortable trivializing it's just a little bit because everything's just a little bit, but when it's all added together, it's life of the 21st century and I don't know that I want to add to that.
Thank you, Don. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
No.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. 4-1, Joe? And I believe we're onto the Town Administrator's report.
I'll try to be brief, but it's timely updates on procurement from Megan Eldridge. First, with regard to our RFQs for appraisal services for 203 Bang Street and Zero Town Way. Zero Town Way is the eminent domain property adjacent to the Marcelline Lands. Unfortunately, we received no responses for appraisal services for Zero Town Way. However, we did get a response for an appraiser for 203 Bang Street, so we do, can at least move that forward. Megan wrote here that we had no responses received for real estate brokerage services for Five Bell's Neck. Actually, I can tell you that we received one regret and no other responses for real estate brokerage services for Five Bell's Neck. Paul Sweetser has offered the town a survey, survey work estimate for Judah Eldridge. The struggle now is trying to find the money to, to pay that, but I think we'll come up with it. There are three RFPs that have been released that are in the mix right now. First are the restaurant RFPs for Golf Course and Harbor. John Rendon, Roman Greer, Sean Fernandez, and Megan did great work on that. We've gotten a number of inquiries from people asking when it's gonna be out, so we were thrilled to tell them last week, it's out, here's where you can find it and for the love of God, please bid. So, we, we hope to have some robust activity on that. And last is advertise, ambulance billing, which is a requirement through the Treasurer's Office and that RFP went out, same time as the restaurants and come back. So, a lot of these things will come back in, in February. I'll analyze some of the, the non-responsive stuff and try to figure out what our next steps are.
Thank you, Jeff. Mary?
Can you just clarify what you said about the Bell's Neck property?
So, we received one Realtor offering regrets that they would not be submitting and no other Realtor submitted.
No Realtors are interested in...
None have responded.
...keeping that property.
Correct.
Okay.
How much, sorry, how much time did they have to respond? Was it adequate?
Let me see on that one. I don't know that it's listed here. I can find out and get back on that one. I know it's at, it's at least three weeks, I want to say, but...
Okay.
Can we, can we just put that back in so we can go out for another round?
We can. There may be other options that we have as well to keep moving, though.
Okay. Discuss it tomorrow and bring it back next week?
Yep.
Thank you. Selectmen's report, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo what was said before, but amplify it. I'm profoundly grateful for the work from the DPW folks over this really catastrophic weekend, as well as the public safety officials and Joe. But I'm gonna say something I could have found unfathomable five to 10 years ago. I also want to profoundly thank EverSource for its efforts because there is definitely upping in their game over the last five years. They, they did a tremendous job. I don't know that I would have wanted to been out on a bucket trying to restore electricity in this storm.
Mary?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Julie?
No, I would echo Don's comments, only I would do it acoustically. I'm not amplifying. And I would just say that.
No pun intended.
Want me to accompany with the talk?
It's too late for that.
Good one, Julie.
I just have to say, EverSource shocked me that I didn't lose power and I thank the DPW, I thank Fire and Police, I thank you, Joe. So, thanks. It was a, it was a rough weekend, but it wasn't that rough in the end, so thank you.
Larry?
No, I agree.[1761.11]